Hello and good evening and welcome to our Tuesday evening workshop. If you two can please introduce yourselves and kick us off.
Tracy Roy, Finance Director.
Kevin Gagne, Director Public Works.
Tonight we're going to start with the utility funds on page seventy-eight of your book. We are not recommending an increase in water, however, in sewer and stormwater. We are recommending a twenty percent increase. Water revenues decreased one hundred and sixteen thousand nine seventy-five, while operating is increasing the expenses of six hundred and forty-two, three twenty-two, eight point nine six, nine six percent, producing an operating deficit of nine forty-five, nine thirty-four. Personnel services increased one hundred and thirty-one, one ninety-six or nine percent. This department has seventeen point five employees. Increase in regular time by one hundred and sixteen, one twenty-four for steps and colas. Overtime increased fifteen thousand seventy-two due to the rate of pay and more hours. Temporary wages remain flat for all operations. The number of weeks and hours did not change. Fringe benefit increased fifty-eight thousand two thirty-two or ten percent. Increases in main pirs fifteen thousand six fifty-seven due to steps and colas and new employees choosing main pirs instead of deferred comp. The employer share is going from nine point two percent of fiscal year twenty-five to ten point two percent in fiscal year twenty-six. FICA increased ten thousand twenty-three dollars due to steps and colas. Deferred comp increased two hundred and seventy dollars. Retired health savings has increased three thousand four fourteen. This is the conversion of sick time in some groups, vacation time, which is converted to funds deposited to post-retirement health cost. Main, the main, you're going to see this throughout the night, the main personal family medical leave. This is the first full year, so it's an increase of six hundred and forty-one dollars. Increase in health insurance of twenty-six thousand five forty-eight. The actual rate came in at seven percent in fiscal year twenty-five. And changes of employees with single coverage to family. We are estimating six months at an eight percent increase. Flex spending had decreased four hundred and sixty-six due to the lower fees. Health reimbursement had an increase of two hundred and seventy dollars, an increase of workers' comp of nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Unemployment and Boston Mutual Insurance remain flat. Clothing allowance decreased eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Debt service increased forty thousand nine oh two. Interest increased eighty-four thousand four fifty-six, while principal decreased forty-three thousand five fifty. This is due to the sale of the 2023 bonds that we did in September 2024 and the estimated 2024 bond sale that we will be doing during that year. A decrease in debt reimbursement of four dollars. This is the debt for software, GIS and comp plan. Operating expenses increased five hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine twenty-two or thirty-three percent. The first division is source of supplies, which is on page seventy-nine. Increase of five hundred thousand nine twenty-two, mostly resulting in the increase in purchase and power utilities of four hundred and twenty-two thousand seven sixty-four. All streetlights and water power are charged to water at the pump station and the credit from the Monty is applied to water and streetlights credit to the water. The credit usually offsets the CMP bill, but we are not expecting a large increase for fiscal year twenty-six. Contractual services other increased thirty-five thousand one hundred. This is due to the Lake Auburn gull harassment by USDA shared fifty-fifty and pressure relief valves for the pump stations. An increase in contractual services of hazmat of five thousand five hundred and fifty for the new training company for hazmat technician training. That's that division for source and supplies. I don't know if you want to stop and if you have any questions before we move on to the next division?
Yes, we'll take some questions at this time. Counselor Nagin.
So the first thing that stands out is that in 2023 and 2024, it looks like that we were running at least in the, in the black and it looks like we're running at a deficit for 2025 as well as the proposed budget for 2026. I know that there was some talk about, well, we're talking about increasing some of the service costs, but when, when could we hit like an even level? Why are we showing a net loss in revenue?
So due to the carryforward, it wasn't needed as an increase. They're lowering, instead of going and having a, you, um, increase with the water because it has to be approved.
Through PUC, right?
We're, we're running down that remain in balance before that happens.
But we are running at a, at a deficit this year, correct?
Yes, it's estimated to have a three hundred and eighty-three thousand six seventy-nine deficit.
Okay, and could you just explain the purchased power and utilities portion? What exactly is that and why have we seen it as, as a debit and then, well, basically as a, as a negative amount and a positive amount in given years?
Sure, so our initial pump station was in a location where the Monty is now. It was called Island Avenue Pump Station. And actually historically, when the water main, water transmission line went up to the lake, they actually powered that pump station using hydropower. So in the mid-eighties, CMP came to the city of Lewiston and wanted to purchase that site. So through negotiations and, and the purchase of that site, we got what we have now is Main Street Pump Station, Central Ave Pump Station. So we created two zones as well as this agreement that we call the Monty Hydro, the Monty Agreement. So in that, it's a return to the city, to the water division specifically for so many kilowatt hours per year. So what happens is we get a reconciliation letter, usually it's been later, but some should be in January. So when we receive that, we look at where that is falling with what we've been accounting for in our budget. They do that on a calendar year, we're on a fiscal year. So we know what's going to happen in the next, in the first two quarters of FY twenty-six. We don't know is the, the last two quarters in there. So what we end up doing is try to forecast and look at where things are at. Typically, they look at the market rate and give us a credit. And we've been bouncing between over too many credits and then they cut back. So this is what we've been doing for years, try to figure out what's that credit. And then as far as streetlights, Central Ave Pump Station has a circuit that feeds part of the streetlights. So that credit comes back to as a flat fee for power to those streetlight circuits into this, into this account. So those are those two credits back into this power account. The consumption end is strictly that. It's how many, how much often we run in those two pumps. And it, I believe this is the same power as up at the lake. So all of our power is in this one account. So you have Main Street, Central Ave Pump Stations as well as all the power that Lewiston gets charged for anything up at the UV facility and the Chloramines Facility.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Glant, did you have a question?
He covered my question.
Okay, yes, Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to be seeing and hearing a lot about these, the new personal family medical leave in all of the accounts, all the personnel accounts. This is the first year that that's been implemented under the state legislation and my understanding is that the one-half percent contribution was simply a pie in the sky guess as to what this program is going to cost. So I'm wondering if you have any sense for out years? Are we going to see some significant corrections as we realize that the point five percent was underestimating?
They still haven't.
Do you mind moving the mic closer to you?
So they still haven't even gotten everything finalized. I know that the sign-on and you can get on the website and they've had training on how to upload, but we've had no more information given to us.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm warning all of us that we need to be aware that there could be some significant swings in these costs to the city and the employees in the out years as the whole program learns that point five percent is insufficient to sustain the, the goals.
And I don't see that happening for at least a, a good year or two before that happens because half the people will not be going on it right away. The individuals that are still in contracts and that's across the board in Maine if they're in union contracts and, and they're not closed. So it might be a good two years before we see what they actually, when they start having to withdraw the money.
Okay, thank you.
Division Water Treatment is on page seventy-nine. Increase of fifty-two thousand seven eighty-nine. It's an increase in the Lake Auburn Watershed Commission of twenty-five thousand for the increase of the city's portion of the expense. The commission is, protects the drinking water and has approved the budget to hire a full-time person instead of the part-time person they currently had so that they can start inspecting the septic systems around the water in Auburn, the Lake. Contractual Services for Management, one thousand four eighty-two for the Lewiston Auburn Watershed costs for manager, physician, lab director and the supervisor control data acquisition. Chemicals increased thirteen thousand nine fifty due to the rates going up for the chemicals for the sodium high chloride from three dollars and sixty cents to four dollars and one cent. The fluoride rate going from four seventy to five twenty-three and the soda from two oh two to two oh five. Any questions on the water treatment division?
Counselor Chidham.
Yes, I'd just like to clarify something you said, Director Roy. The hire at the Protection Commission is not doing septic and septic system inspections. Those are being done by independent contractors and will be paid for by the homeowners. So the taxpayers of Lewiston will not be paying for that particular effort. This person is overseeing that program and will not be doing the inspections themselves.
Sorry. Distribution Expense Operations increased one hundred and twenty-two thousand two seventy-eight. Increases in material supplies for thirteen thousand due to police detail for the water main breaks and distribution system maintenance and repairs which are increasing for Main Street project. Clothing allowance, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars per contract due to the rate increase. Seminars, travel and school, five hundred dollars for training for the seventeen licensed employees. Rental of equipment is increasing three thousand due to vehicle increase for the two pickup trucks and the excavation. Paving twelve thousand seven hundred due to the method C and method D paving increasing. Any questions on the Distribution Expense Operation Division?
Director Gagne, how many water breaks did we have during this time period roughly?
I'd have to go look. I think we're about a dozen.
A dozen?
This, in this winter season, I believe we've had several large ones. One of them was our transmission main. That was the most critical and time one. We've had several small ones. So I can get, I can get that actual number, but we did have a cold year. I think that historically, probably up until about 10 years ago, it was mostly winter breaks due to frost. The investment we've made in our transmission over the years, we're seeing those more throughout the year and much less overall. But this year, we, I think we saw about a dozen in this winter season.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further question? Yes, Counselor Chidham.
Director Gagne, I'd love to hear you say that the trend in breaks is going down because of the expenses we've been incurring in replacing cast iron with ductile iron pipe.
Absolutely true.
Okay, fine, thank you. And could you explain method C and D paving, please?
So one, very quickly, one is a hand placed and one is a machine placed. So if we have our smaller, if we're just digging up a small valve or a service leak, we can usually on a small side street, we can, we can use the hand placed. Larger main arterials per our paving specs, we use machine placed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next is the customer account on page eighty. Increase of twelve thousand eight fifty-one. The increases in seminars, travel and school for two hundred and twenty-four dollars for the New England Governmental Finance Offices Association and the main government finance office associations to attend those seminars. Printing Services, one thousand nine seventy due to the estimated increase for printing for the third party. We will be going out to bid fiscal year twenty-six due to the current contract ending for our water sewer and stormwater bills. The city uses, used to create the utility bills and mail them out and fill out certified mailing envelopes with the city information. To be more efficient, we went to a third party to contract out all with order and printing green certified mailing that already has the city's information in for, for the tax liens for the sewer and stormwater. Contractual Services Other increased one thousand nine sixty-four due to the increase of air cards and for the tablets. Postage increased five hundred and eighty due to the estimate notice of lien certificate rate increasing. Contractual Services for Collection increased one thousand one fifty-five due to the estimated number of liens to be filed. Contractual Management increased five thousand one hundred due to the increase of the MIS support for wage increase offset by contractual services license decrease of seven thousand five hundred and fifty-five for the annual license fee for the project management software is going down. That is customer accounts. Are there any questions on that division?
Counselor Chidham.
Director Roy, I have no idea what an air card for tablet is.
I can take that. So as part of our asset management system, Beehive, we have tablets in the field to be able to collect the data from the work orders when they complete. So in all divisions in Public Works, they've been, these have been deployed either by supervisors or by the crews. So these are in strictly in the water in this account for the water field staff to be able to update and maintain those tablets.
Counselor Chidham, it's like an iPad and the air card is the cellular method that they connect to the internet.
Bluetooth in essence or?
It uses cellular data.
It uses cellular data. That's the air card is cellular data.
Internet connectivity.
Thank you for educating me.
Counselor Nagin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I heard correctly that we contract out to a third party the, the, the actual bills that we mail out for utilities?
Correct.
Is there a way at some point that we could get a breakdown of all the services that we subcontract out? Like is there, I don't know if that's like a line item somewhere that, that we could easily look at just to see everything that we are contracting through third parties? But you found that it, we found that it's more efficient than doing it ourselves?
Correct.
And less expensive?
Yes, because they do bulk mailing. So the, the mailer, the, the company that we contract with, we actually get cheaper postage through them when they're doing bulk mailing.
And so all of our mailings through, throughout the city, we contract with this third party or no?
Just the tax bills and then the water sewer and stormwater. I'd have to look at other departments to see what they contract out, but regular billing that we do through our software, general billing, we mail out ourself.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Administration and General Expenses, which are on page eighty and eighty-one. Increased sixty-nine thousand five eighty. The increases in all insurances of thirteen thousand fifteen. The largest increase are the Insurances Other for eleven thousand seven sixty-seven. This is due to large increases in the property insurance. Contractual Services Account increased six thousand two seventy-eight due to the overhead charges from finance and audit. Contractual Services for Public Works Admin increased four thousand two hundred due to the overhead charges. Contractual Services of Management, nine hundred and twenty-four due to the overhead for home, uh, human resources. Contractual Services Executive went up a hundred dollars due to the increase of the executive administration administrator. Dues and memberships increased one thousand six fifty-one due to the dig safe operations cost. Any questions on that division?
Counselor Saul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have flexible spending account highlighted. I think I wanted a definition of that. Flexible spending account.
So that is when we have either dependent care or medical care, we can put in a portion ourself to cover like the co-pays. So there is a fee that the company, the third-party company charges.
Okay.
So those are the fees.
Does it say it went down? Is that, is that right? It went down?
We went with a new company that decreased a little bit, the fees.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nagin.
And just to follow up on that, the flexible spending accounts, I assume that within the union contracts, it were required to pay the fees for the management of the program, although the contributions come from the individuals?
The fee, the fees, I believe are through, um, the contributions, I believe we pay, I don't know if it's three dollars and fifty cents, the city pays the fee portion.
Thank you.
Capital outlay decreased one hundred and fifty-seven thousand. This is due to the depreciation expense. The depreciation expense in these accounts are your actual capital, which you see on page seventy-seven. So your operating portion is at the top. So you'll see water, they have a Lewiston SCAD water treatment program. They have an equipment replacement program. They have the meter replacement program and the Gate Valley boxes for the Main Street project. So those are your items that you see within your capital outlay in the water. Do you have any questions on that?
Counselor Chidham.
Director Gagne, on the water meter replacement, what's the typical life of a water meter and is this two hundred thousand dollars an annual expense?
Those great questions. The PUC will say that a residential five-eighths water meter should be tested every seven years. We made a switch probably 15 years to go to, go to a, um, an I Pearl census water meter through our vendor. Those meters were guaranteed for the life of the meter to be accurate. So we've been getting more than 10 years out of those meters for accuracy. What we've done is we actually went to a 10-year replacement schedule to try to meet PUC requirements. So at this time, we're behind due to COVID not catching up. That was three years worth of not getting into people's homes and whatnot. So the two hundred thousand, we believe, is still accurately replacing meters on a 10-year schedule. That schedule changes depending on the size of the meter. Commercial meters are expected to be tested either annually or every two years, depending on the size of the meter. And we do that inline testing with a vendor. So at this point, we have a proposal that we're talking and bringing to, Acting Administrator O'Malley to be able to talk about where we're at with that program. But we do need to stay on that schedule. I think it's funded appropriately to do that.
So just to confirm, two hundred thousand dollars a year is an ongoing expense. I wonder, not for discussion tonight, but if this is an expense, should it not be in the operating budget rather than the capital budget? Just a question.
This is, is split with sewer. So half of the metering is also split on the sewer side because the rate, the consumption from sewer is coming from the water consumption.
Yes, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. How do you test them to make sure they're accurate? You say they're good for 10 years. I mean, what is the test for residential? Individuals out there listening, you're going to go out and check them because everybody's always screaming, water's too much.
Right. We are, up until the new technology, they were testable and depending on the vendor, you could repair parts of the meter. New technology across the industry has been to tamper-proof, non-reparable, non-moving parts inside the smaller meters. So we wouldn't test them. We'd just change it out for a new meter. In the past, we actually had a test bench. We had staff that would test them and, and do all of that. So the trend moving forward is, is not testing but replacing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nagin.
And again, there, we don't actually do that testing, right? There's a, or the installation, there's a vendor that does that portion?
Up until currently, we change out the water meters. Lewiston, Lewiston Water Division staff actually schedule appointments and change water meters inside of customers' homes.
So when you mentioned the testing based on a vendor, what were you referring to?
So our, our larger meters, you take in our, any of our larger customers that they're in production mode. So for them to remove a, a three-inch meter, put it on a bench and test it is not feasible. So they actually have inline test. So the vendor comes, it's actually EJ Prescott. They have a division that tests water meters inline. So they'll connect, they'll do a bypass so the vendor can, has a minor disruption and we test the meter in place for calibration.
And the fees for those tests are in, in here or they bill directly to the?
Once we install a meter for a customer, replacement is, unless it's deemed that they somehow damaged and didn't take care of our water meter, then there's no charge for that testing to the customer.
Thank you.
Counselor Chidham.
Thank you. I'm troubled by these new meters, which don't have any internal moving parts. Is it a PUC regulation that they be tested every seven years? And we've elected to replace them every 10 years instead of that residential five-eighths meter testing? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
You're summarizing it correctly, I believe. So the PUC standard is that, uh, the, actually the vendors from each of the meter manufacturers have certificates. PUC ruling hasn't taken out them specifically by, by vendor. But if we have a complaint, a customer complains, I'm, I'm, my bill's too high. We'll actually take that meter out, change it out with a new meter that's fully calibrated and it's less time and effort and less disruptive to the customer than bringing the meter back that's still tested fine. We can actually reuse that meter.
Okay, and that gets to my, my second point. If we're doing a rotating 10-year replacement schedule, instead of having the customer complain about excessive consumption or alleged excessive, excessive consumption, these meters don't wear out if they don't have any moving parts. What happens to the old meter and are we being overly aggressive in replacing a meter that doesn't wear out every 10 years?
We're actually behind. I think we're probably 15 years on those and we're still pulling out old brass meters, so prior technology. So we have about 2,000 meters that need to be changed out. We're behind. So based on the 10 years, typically the warranty period will get a free replacement if it fails and, and that they've been honoring that and that works. I believe that, you know, our disposal has been through the vendor and we haven't had any incurred cost for disposal. But can I answer your question? But can I answer your question?
Uh, well, in a sense, yes. I'm concerned that we've got, we're taking, at the end of ten years, we're taking a perfectly good meter out of service, disposing of it and replacing it with a new meter for no apparent reason other than, gee, it's been ten years.
Our goal is to fund it every ten years, but the reality is we're not throwing out good meters.
Okay.
We're not at that ten-year timeline. That's been our goal, but we're not, we're not meeting it currently.
All right. And when we do meet it, will we be throwing out good meters at the end of ten years?
That's not my plan.
Okay, I hope not. So then the, the ten-year replacement, which is a Lewiston artifact, not a PUC artifact.
Correct.
Will go to twelve and fifteen and so on until we finally say, okay, these meters are permanent meters and we, they're in, and the only time where we're gonna change them is when a customer alleges that they're being, uh, they're over-consuming.
If there's a question on calibration, we, we will look at how we deal with that, whether we're pulling a meter at seven or whether PUC has embraced the technology and...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
What does the manufacturer say is the rated life of these meters?
Uh, the current product I have, I think, is believed is fifteen years.
Thank you. Further questions, comments?
Next, we're gonna start with sewer, which is on page eighty-four of your book. We are recommending a twenty percent increase for sewer. This will increase the revenues to eight hundred and seventy-one thousand three oh six, or twelve point five percent, and a decrease of expenditures of sixty-eight thousand six twenty-nine, producing an operating deficit of three hundred and thirty-one thousand two thirty. Personnel services increased eighty-five thousand five sixty-nine. Salaries rose by seventy-one thousand six eighty-five for steps and colas. Overtime increased eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars due to wage increases. Temporary wages increased two thousand. Fringe benefits increased twenty-nine thousand five oh six, reflecting increase in the main pirs nine thousand four sixty-six due to the steps and colas, along with the employer percentage going from nine point nine, ten point two. Deferred comp increased a hundred and sixty-six dollars. FICA increased six thousand three ninety-three due to steps and colas. Retirement health savings increased two thousand three eighty-two. Main personal family medical leave incre, uh, first year, six hundred and forty-one dollars. Health insurance increased seven thousand three dollars due to the health and cross, increased costs. Flex spending increased thirty-four dollars. Workers' comp increased four thousand four twenty-four. This was offset by a decrease in the health reimbursement arrangement of one thousand eight thirty-six. Debt service increased one hundred and thirty-two thousand three forty-seven due to the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bonds and the estimated on the new debt for twenty-twenty-four. Treatment plant increased five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This increase is all in no-name pond septic. Operating expenses increased fifty thousand nine twenty-two, five point three fourth percent. The first division, we will go over on page eighty-five, is the pump station division, increased fifty-seven thousand seven sixty-three. Purchase power and utility increased sixteen thousand four hundred and forty due to the increase of Randall Road, Crowley Road, Tall Pines, and twelve other CMP accounts. Contractual services for hazmat, three thousand four hundred for training and expert support for new employees that need initial training. Material and supplies, five thousand four hundred due to the increase in the VFDA drive replacements. The increase is offset by a decrease in the contractual services of management of three thousand five hundred and forty due to the decrease of the SCAD tech coverage. That is the division of pump station. Are there any questions on that division?
Uh, Counselor Chidum.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, do we have two separate, uh, main pirs, uh, accounts? Or one went up from nine point two to ten point two, and the other went from nine point nine to ten point two?
Correct. So there is the non-union and some of the union, and then the fire and police.
Okay.
So fire and police are on one plan, and all the rest are on another plan. So there are two.
All right, thank you. And I just wanna confirm, the no-name pond is a, is a underground, basically, it's a large septic system dealing with ten or twelve houses down in what we call the settlement?
Correct.
Is this simply pumping, uh, the, the septic tank?
That, this is all costs associated with that, maintaining that pump station, leach field, uh, inspections, as well as any licensing or relicensing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sewer treatment is on page eighty-five, increased five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which is all in the no-name pond septic. Next division is transmission and operations, page eighty-five, increased sixty-two thousand six oh seven. The increases are noted in clothing allowance of eight hundred and thirty-three for two additional employees per contract. Seminars, travel, and school for five hundred dollars for new employees. Contractual services other, ten thousand, to add the water meters, radio, and radio re-devices, they were removed in fiscal year twenty-five's budget. Material and supplies, one thousand five hundred for collection systems, maintenance, and repairs for increasing material costs and small tools and supplies. That is the transmission operation. Any question on that?
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. Why is overtime so high compared to what it's been?
So in the sewer division, we're, um, since twenty-seventeen, we've been under an EPA administrative order. So that requires us to inspect our systems, uh, do a video inspection of the manholes as well as all the pipe every ten years. We had not completed that, and so up until, and still, we're looking for dead-end manholes that are in cross-country areas, and so we've been spending time to try to find those, as well as other normal emergencies like sewer backups, um, and those type of issues. So right now, we're trying to maintain and get in compliance and stay in compliance with the DEP and EPA regulations.
So basically, during the day, you're doing what you have to do and then using the overtime to do the things that need to be done?
We've been doing the manhole inspections during regular time, as well as overtime to get caught up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, in addition to emergencies like backups, yep.
Uh, Counselor Chidum.
This may be beyond all our pay grades, but with the elimination of the Federal Environmental Protection Agency, do you see a reduction in the requirements that are coming down? Or are these all DEP requirements?
So DEP is delegated authority for EPA. Uh, so our, our license as an NPDS or discharge license for any of our CSOs are run through DEP. But any of a, um, what we call an SSO or sanitary sewer overflow or a dry weather overflow, those are not permitted, not licensed, and a violation. So in order to maintain our system, we need to make sure we're cleaning it regularly, that's on a five-year schedule, we're inspecting it regularly, and that we're getting ahead of things. Solids, grease, those type of issues are issues in the sewer, and we're, we're trying to maintain compliance. So I don't see us backing off from this. We have a seven-person, uh, crew in this division to maintain over a hundred and fifty miles of sewer. So I, right now, we're, we're kinda getting a deal, to be honest with you. When the administrative order came in, we added these two, uh, sewer maintenance technicians. Uh, we had a vector, and we've been upping their efforts along with our consultant, our, our inspectors' efforts to be able to meet compliance. So I don't see us backing away from DEP requirements.
I'm glad to hear you say that.
Next is customer accounts on page eighty-six, increase of six thousand two seventy-two. Seminars, travel, school had an increase of two hundred and twenty-four dollars for, as I mentioned, in water, the New England Government Finance Officers and the Maine Government Finance Offices Association seminars. Print-in services, as mentioned in water, a thousand nine seventy due to the estimated increase for the third party. Contractual services management, five thousand one hundred due to the increase in the MIS support for wage increases. Contractual services other, a hundred dollars due to the increase in the air cards for the tablet. Decreases in contractual services licenses of nine thousand two oh two for the annual license fee of the project management software. Contractual services collection decreased eight hundred and forty due to the decrease in liens. Postage decreased three hundred and eight dollars due to the less liens being mailed out. That is the customer service division. Are there any questions on that division? We'll move to the administration and general expenses on page eighty-six and eighty-seven, increase of thirty-nine thousand three fifty-five. Increase in health insurance of seven thousand three dollars due to the rate increase. Workers' comp, four thousand four twenty-four. Flex spending, thirty-four dollars. This is offset by a decrease in the health reimbursement arrangement of one thousand eight thirty-six. Increase in seminars, travel, and school, thousand for training for licenses. Contractual services account increased six thousand two seventy-eight due to the overhead for finance and audit. Contractual services legal, six hundred and twenty-five for the possible future work regarding the U.S. EPA. Contractual service management, nine hundred and twenty-four due to the increase of the MIS support for wage increase. Contractual services, public works admin, four thousand two hundred due to the overhead charge. Contractual ex, um, executive, one hundred for administration overhead. Material and supplies increased three thousand due to the office supply's need. Insurance, two thousand four hundred due to the rate increase. Dues and memberships, one thousand six fifty-one due to the dig safe operating cost. Are there any questions on that division?
Counselor Najee.
This isn't a question about the division, but I'm wondering, Director Roy, if we could have, um, the notes that you read, um, each session, if we could have a copy of those forwarded to us?
I, I did. On these utility ones were forwarded Monday morning. I was hoping I'd get them to you on Friday so you'd have them over the weekend, but unfortunately, I didn't get them out till Monday.
Okay, I missed them, sorry about that one.
So capital outlay decreased three hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred. On page seventy-seven shows the detail of operating along with the LCIP. The city is requesting, we reduce this, um, and we're requesting to pay for some of this operating capital by using old premium and interest, um, that were sold and not used currently, so that it decreases the, the request that we're asking for those capital items. Any questions on that?
Uh, Counselor Herman.
Thank you. So are you saying that that two point five one million, um, will be a little bit lower as far as what we're, what we're being asked to bond?
So these are the operating. So on that page seventy-seven, you have the operating, which is up top. So your sewer request was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred. We removed that request, and we're, um, recommending that we use old bond premiums and interest so that we don't have to have that in the budget to reduce the decrease of the sewer. Because when it originally came in, it came in higher, so we were looking at ways we could cut it to lower the decrease, um, of the percentage and bring it down to twenty percent for the citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Chidum.
Thank you. Now I'm confused. Um, the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand that's listed for operating capital is the net after reducing it by three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars?
If you look at your page, um, the performer that we had for sewer on page eighty-four, you'll notice that we removed the recommended capital outlay. Originally, that amount was in there, the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred, which would have increased the rate more. We removed that, and we're recommending that you use premium and interest to lower the percentage of what we would have had to increase. That's why there is a zero in your capital outlay. So last year, the, the budget was three hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred. So that's why it's reduced. It's basically reduced down to zero.
To zero.
Which last year, it was three hundred and sixty-seven, five hundred. So that's the decrease.
So what's the two hundred and sixty-seven? That's new operating capital? And where does that show up on page eighty-four in the pro forma cash flow?
That was in your capital outlay, and we removed it.
So two sixty-seven is out, then?
Correct. We're recommending that it be paid by premium and interest.
Well, that's the three sixty-seven.
No, what was in the budget? What was in the budget was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred.
Okay.
That was removed and zeroed out. The difference is when we're saying that it decreased was from last year, fiscal year's twenty-five request, to the zero of this year's request.
All right. So the equipment replacement program, the Randall pump station upgrades, and the CSO permanent metering?
Correct. We're looking to, to have you guys authorize old bond, um, premium and interest to reduce that.
All right, so money that's already been borrowed?
Correct.
And no new bonds for those three particular projects?
For those three items, correct.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm sorry for being so obtuse, I appreciate it.
So if we're all set with that, storm water can be found on page eighty-nine. We're also recommending a twenty percent increase for storm water. This will increase the revenues to five hundred and eighty thousand, or eighteen point six percent. There's a decrease in expenditures totaling twenty-nine thousand nine forty-four, producing an operating deficit of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand four, a hundred and forty-four dollars, which will be covered by cash on hand. Personnel services increased one hundred and one thousand one thirty-one. Note, there are no full-time positions charged here. Salaries, wages, regular increase sixty-six thousand two seventy-one. Overtime increased twenty-four thousand nine hundred due to the increase of cross-charging and salary adjustments. Temporary wages increased nine thousand nine hundred sixty to cover the rate per hour to be competitive due to the difficulty in filling positions. Fringe benefits increased twenty-one thousand two fourteen, reflecting the increase in main pirs, nine thousand forty-seven dollars, due to the steps and colas and the increase in the percentage. Deferred comp, eight oh four. FICA increased six thousand nine sixty-eight due to steps and colas. Retirement health savings increased one thousand four twenty. Main personal family medical leave, first time, four hundred and seven dollars. Health insurance increased eleven thousand two fifty-six. This is due to increase in cost. Flex spending, three hundred and three dollars. Meals, six hundred and thirty-one, which is contractual obligation. Decrease in workers' comp of ten thousand two oh four and clothing allowance of one thousand ninety-eight. Debt service increased sixty-seven thousand four twenty-nine. This is also due to the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bond and the estimated new debt of twenty-twenty-four. Operating expenses increased thirty thousand two eighty-two. The first division will start on, on page ninety, is planning and permanent, increased fourteen thousand seven seventeen. Increases in contractual services for engineering of two thousand ninety dollars due to the outreach per MS four permits. Print-in services of six hundred for the handouts for storm water information. The rental of equipment for three hundred for the truck rental for summer interns. That is planning and permanent. Do we have any questions on that division? Next is storage and retention on page ninety, increased three thousand four dollars. The increase is all due in contractual services for engineering for the clean water streets. CSO storage, two times a year. That is that division. Any questions on that item? Collection systems operation is on page ninety and ninety-one. Increase of a hundred and fifteen thousand five seventy-six. Increase in mails, six hundred and thirty-one per the contractual obligations. Material and supplies, thirteen thousand three twenty for a twenty-four percent increase in materials. Rental of equipment, five thousand due to rental hours increasing. Outside rental of equipment, five thousand for rental for long-reach excavation and mini excavation, excavator, sorry. The increase in offset by decreases in clothing allowance of a hundred and ninety-eight dollars due to the, due to actual contractual services of engineering, decrease in two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four for the removal of the cleaning culverts and the storm drains. Any questions on collection systems operations?
Counselor Chidum.
Yes, Director Gagne, where did culvert and storm drain cleaning move to? Is that now in the public works budget? Is that now in the public works budget?
Which account number is that? Six oh five oh?
It's the one that's saving us nearly three thousand dollars by not doing it. Six four five zero.
Yeah, we discovered that's being charged to a different account. It's under a general contract.
I'm sorry. This is Director Bates. What did you say?
We discovered it wasn't. Some of the contracted work for this assignment was being done, was being handled by a separate contract in a different division.
I see. Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Nagy.
I just have a quick question overall on basically six four ten and six four fifty. The overtime and the temporary wages pieces, they're both fairly big increases over a period of a couple of years. And so my question is, who fills the positions for the temporary wages and what is the purpose for it for both six four ten and six four fifty? That overtime isn't cut. You know what I mean? Like if we're charging a lot in overtime, but we also have a temporary wage line, why do we have both at the same time? As increases?
Six four ten and six four five oh, correct?
Yep. So basically, we had budgeted, what I'm showing at six four, six four fifty, we had budgeted five thousand, one hundred dollars for overtime. The actual overtime at this point is almost thirty thousand dollars. Next year, we're budgeting thirty thousand dollars and we're also budgeting an additional twenty, twenty-three eighty or twenty-three thousand, eight hundred for temporary wages.
So what I'm seeing is these are assignments when we have shortage, we had historically had shortages in the solid waste division. So we would have somebody from highway move over to cover those roles. And then we needed to assign somebody on the stormwater side to do cleaning and inspections and other operations that we're doing. Street sweeping and those types of things.
So is this being credited to? I'm just trying to figure out how the, if we're still paying the employee, even if it's coming from another section, how does the temporary wage piece fit in?
We also have summer students that are doing inspections on outfalls. And I'm not sure if that's covered in this account meeting. We have engineering staff that do seasonal inspections for the summer.
Okay, and the increases for planning and permitting aren't as much, but they're still fairly substantial in comparison to the previous year. And so again, just like an explanation as to why we're seeing both the overtime increase and the increase in temporary wages.
I can explain a little bit on the overtime and actually temporary. I'll just, I'll start with the overtime. We have an increase in responsibilities for MS four permit. This budget, in this budget, we maintain all of the street sweeping and all the sidewalk sweeping. So we have to sweep every street in the city once a year. Then we have a maintenance. And we also recently had to start sweeping all the areas in Jepson Brook area and Hartbrook. So that was an increase of responsibilities. At the same time, we have vacancies taking place. So we still have to maintain these responsibilities. So we hold on to every available employee that is willing to do overtime. So that's really increased our overtime. For our temporary wages, we have used them to assist with our catch basin inspections. And we also use them when we can hire, you know, when we can obtain them to take care of our sidewalk machine, which maintains our downtown area. We've had to increase that wage because we just can't get them for, you know, twelve, oh. The minimum wage has gone up every year, but even that isn't attracting college students.
Okay, thank you.
Customer accounts is on page ninety-one and ninety-two. Increase of nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty due to the increases of seminar travel and school, as mentioned in water and sewer for two hundred and twenty-four dollars for the New England Government Finance Office and the Maine Government Finance Office seminars. Contractual services accounts increased four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars due to the overhead charge for finance and audit. Printing services of one thousand, nine hundred due to the increase for the third-party billing. Contractual services and management, three thousand, twelve dollars due to the increase of MIS support for wage increase. Contractual services executive, two thousand, six hundred and fifty for administration overhead. Insurance's other, eight hundred and sixty-eight due to the rate increase. Dues and memberships, a thousand, eight hundred and sixty due to the dig safe operation cost. The increase is offset by the decreases in postage of eighteen dollars due to estimated notice of liens going down. Contractual service collection went down, two thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars due to the decrease in liens. Contractual services license went down, nine thousand, three hundred and twenty due to the decrease in the annual license fee of the project management software. Any questions on the customer account division?
Counselor Chittam.
What management software is having a decrease in its annual licensing fee? This runs counter to real-world experience everywhere else.
So the project management software that we requested and were funded in FY twenty-five, it went through a selection process. And what we were carrying for as an annual fee on the initial rollout, the vendor that was chosen actually has a drop in the annual fee that we requested.
Okay, so we actually overestimated last year and that's reflected in the decreased reality this year?
We were funding on a certain vendor and the different vendors is less annual fee.
Good choice.
Number of seats and licensing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Capital outlay decreased two hundred and fifty thousand. Again, this is on page seventy-seven, which shows the detail for the operating. The city is requesting to pay for capital that is in the operation using old premiums and interest from bonds that are not sold. I mean, that were sold, sorry. That were sold and unused. Any questions on that?
Counselor Glenn.
I have a general question. We mentioned earlier competitive wages. I guess my question would be is with a similar city next door, do we lose employees back and forth? Are we competitive? Are we pretty equal across the board? I mean, this be from a public works to sewer to water. I mean, when I was in my previous location, people would jump for fifty cents to go work next to the town next door. You know, that would happen a lot. And we lost people. So are we somewhere in their ballpark with them? They being our probably biggest competitor?
Up until recently, we were losing staff to Maine Turnpike, DOT and other surrounding towns. With the recent adjustment to the collective bargaining agreement, we're attracting and retaining people. So we're getting people coming in with their CDLs, with experience in all different positions throughout public works.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So any other questions on water, sewer, stormwater?
Counselor Nagy.
Just one of the things that stood out is our debt service obviously has increased this year across the board due to the two thousand, twenty-three bonds. And so my question is, in each of these different accounts, do we have an accounting for all of the excess bond or funds? Like basically, could we get a spreadsheet showing us what's available that has not been accounted for?
Correct. I had planned on updating that and giving you, I have like a summary sheet that shows the year by projects, like all the street projects are together, all the, they're not lumped together, but they're separate by year. That will be given to you. Everything will be updated. You'll see the premiums that haven't been used for both city and school. So you'll see all the projects that out there has what they originally were bonded, what has been spent, if there's an encumbrance in the account and what's remaining.
And generally for bonds that have been issued and not spent, they still stay within the same accounts? Or they stay within the same department? Is that correct?
They stay in the same account. So we have a separate fund for each year of our LCIPs. They stay in that until if we come and ask you to reallocate for a different project, then it gets moved to that project.
Perfect. So we'll see that in the next couple of weeks.
I'm hoping to get that updated to you.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Further questions or comments from the council?
So we're going to move to TIF on page seventy-six. So this account, the economic development budget is funded through the TIF fund. The revenues, we kept current to what was budgeted last year. This will need to be adjusted once all of the CMP TIF gets approved. So I will come back to you and you'll have a new page seventy-six once that gets done. And if you have any questions, we can answer them at that time. But we should be adjusting the revenue once that gets completed. The personal services increased two hundred and seventy-four thousand, thirty-one dollars. The salary increases are for the colas and the step increases along with the new percentages for certain positions recommended by the economic director. On page seventy-six A, there's a breakout of wages by position that are covered in this TIF account. Percentage based fringe benefits, including main pirs, FICA, and the main paid leave was increased twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-five for main pirs, seventeen thousand, seven twenty-five for FICA and three thousand, twenty-two for the main paid leave. Contracted services increased ten thousand, six eighty-five and increase in advertisement marketing for fourteen thousand, two twenty-five for the marketing business arts recreation destinations. Telephone increased three hundred and sixty dollars for the new twenty-five position that was approved. Legal increased two thousand, five hundred for the TIF documents. The increase is offset by a decrease in maintenance and licensing of six thousand, three hundred and in-service training of a hundred dollars. Supplies decreased five hundred dollars. Fixed costs increased twenty thousand dollars. It's all in donation account for the downtown Lewiston Association operating support and match. Capital outlay decreased nine thousand, three hundred due to the office equipment that was budgeted in fiscal year twenty-five for the two new positions that are not needed for fiscal year twenty-six. Any questions on any of those items?
First, I would like the record to reflect that we are joined by Director Libby, Director of Economic and Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Chittam, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Director Libby. When we were looking at the NCCAC TIF, which we're going to be looking at again in a few short weeks, one of the things that we were trying to do was put as much non-economic development salary in the TIF as possible. And you'd mentioned the deputy fire chief as being a potential candidate. I don't see him on this list here. Is there a way to offload him from the tax burden into the TIF? Or we run out of money to do that?
I think that that's within your discretion so long as we could argue to DECD that that deputy fire chief is engaged in economic development-related activity and the proportion of time that we've allocated to that account can pass the straight face test. I would say it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. If you swap that position in, you'll be pulling a different position out and funding that position you're taking out with general fund dollars. So we took a, we provided you a long menu of potential positions that could be TIF-funded. We took your direction on a bottom-line number and then at the staff level made some recommendations on how to allocate those positions to the TIF account.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then, and correct me if I'm not hearing it properly, is the six hundred and four thousand dollar recommended salaries from TIF is the maximum that we can draw from that NCCAC TIF?
That's the number we took based on your direction to us to shelter fifty-five percent of the revenue and collect about one point three million into the TIF account each year.
This represents far less than the fifty-five percent, though. There's other mother that's being sheltered that's not going to payroll and salaries.
Correct. This is, this six oh four number is just salary. It doesn't include fringe, nor does it include general office expenses, investments in community partners engaged in economic development that we've historically funded, business development fund, those kinds of things.
Okay, so those added to this then would represent the fifty-five percent sheltered TIF from the NCCAC?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. In other words, we are maxing out the salary line that we're removing as much from the general tax rolls as we can in salaries.
I think within reason, we don't want to overcommit either. We still have to wait for an assessment to be finalized. We have to wait for DECD to give final approval. So I think this is a conservative approach to allocating TIF funds while ensuring we meet your goal of pulling as much off of the general fund as possible.
Okay, much appreciated. And we'll talk more about the requirements from the State Department of Economic Development.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have two questions. I noticed that salary and wages have gone up considerably. Can you explain that?
Sure. So that increase is really driven by the additional non-economic development staff who are now becoming TIF-funded. So the headcount in my department is remaining the same. It's really bringing in additional portions of salaries from the various departments.
It's on that second page?
Correct, yeah.
Do you all have a carryover, a TIF balance? I think we discussed that before.
Yeah, we have a reserve account that's described in the finance director's notes.
So he's talking about the TIF. So this is in a different fund? So if you look at page seventy-six at the bottom, it shows the available fund balance at the end of the year. And then, of course, it has projected because fiscal year twenty-five is not done yet. So if everything goes as planned, it will end fiscal year twenty-five. We're looking at, with everything recommended, we'll have four hundred and fifty-six thousand left at the end of two thousand, twenty-six. But that, as I said, will change due to the fact we have not increased the revenue for the new TIF until we get more information on that to the exact. I did not want to adjust the revenue piece, so that will change a little bit.
So I guess my question is, at the end of this year, we're going to have three-quarters of a million dollars that we're not spending on things we might be able to spend on? Would that be a correct analogy? Seven hundred and forty-nine thousand? I mean, can that money be used to buy something else down in our budget to secure our, trying to get things down as low as we can?
There's projects that are in there that haven't been completed that may be completed. We only have expenses up to, of course, the end of February.
Correct.
So not the full year is done. So there might be a large project that's within the TIF that hasn't been completed yet.
Is there any way to know that information?
I can look at the prior year budget and see if there's anything still open.
I mean, if in fact that was the scenario, could any of that money be used for something else other than economic development? Or was it all earmarked because it was TIF'd to that department at the only place it can be?
It's earmarked for TIF. That's why it's in its own separate fund. It can only be used for specific, you know, for the growth and it's for specific contracted services or construction. It was for specific use. That's why it's in that separate fund.
Right, but what kind of items could it be used for? Other words, is more than just, I would like to believe that there is more there. You know, if we didn't, if we had a half million dollars in the year left over, correct? Is there anything else we could do with some of that money that's going to help bring down the tax burden on the citizens elsewhere in our budget?
We'd have to look at all the TIF agreements and make sure that you're abiding by the laws of what can be pulled out to be covered for that.
I would like to know that information just so we can have an idea. I mean, I'm not opposed with, I'm opposed, I guess, with having a half million dollars sitting in a pot that might be used elsewhere. And I'm not thinking about spending it down. By no means would that be the situation. Should we get through this next TIF we're going through and we get what we think we're going to be getting from it, you know, there could be some monies in there to help us lower our city budget, which I think is tremendously important in this process. If he's already maxed out on payroll, based on what he's saying, us twenty percent here, ten percent there, you know, maybe it can be thirty percent. I don't know, you know, how all those rules, that's why we let you guys take care of that for us. We just like We just like to ask the hard questions.
So, Councilor, I'd say you've hired me to be a TIF expert. You've hired Tracy to be a finance expert. I think we can explore the questions you're asking and come back with some recommendations.
Yeah, I just like, you know, it'd be nice to know that we're not sitting on money that could possibly be used for something else in our budget. Thank you.
Understood.
And I also want to mention that within this budget is the donation for the L.A. Arts. I don't know if we want to have Jim come up and speak.
One second, Director Roy. Councilor Nagin, did you have a question about the current topic?
I was just looking for a point of clarity on the, on the remaining seven-hundred-and-forty-nine, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that is showing available at this moment. So, one, we have four more months left, and two, this is the entirety of this based on the Walmart TIF, or is there another portion?
This is all the TIFs together. So, the ones, everything that goes into that account is, even if we're reimbursing the individual, the owner, that money goes in there because it's sheltered, and then we then pay them through that account. So, it's an in-and-out for a lot of the TIFs. But for the ones that are percentage for construction or for improvements, all those portions go in there. So, that's why I said I'd have to look at what has been going in there and what projects were put aside for that within the TIF document.
Okay. That, thank you.
Jim, come up. So, he requested forty thousand. We put in the budget thirty-five thousand, so I thought he would like to speak to the council on his request.
If you could please introduce yourself and tell us the organization you're with.
Yes, I'm Jim Perakilis. I'm the board chair of L.A. Arts, and with me this evening is our new employee, Courtney Reed Marsh, who is our arts agency administrator. And also present is Darby Ray, who is a fellow board member. So, we're, we're very fortunate to have the opportunity to speak to you all this evening, and we're grateful for the support that you have long given to L.A. Arts. We are the arts agency for the cities of Lewiston and Auburn, and we are looking at a renewal of the thirty-five-thousand-dollar grant that we got last year from the city. Our expenses have grown partly because our programming has grown substantially over the last two years, and it has required us to hire a second staff member. Gerald Walsh, who is our arts agency manager, was not able to be here tonight because of family demands. But we just, this past December, hired Courtney Reed Marsh as our second part-time staff member. So, that has, has resulted in a significant increase in our expenses.
No, that, I'm just talking.
Oh, okay. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about our programming or about our budget. I, I've submitted a letter describing some of, of the major initiatives that we're engaged in, and frankly, there's quite a lot more that we have. We, we have had basically an avalanche of requests and inquiries from the community, from other arts organizations, from non-arts organizations, from individuals. And we do a lot of collaborative work with other organizations, and we're sort of supportive leader for the other arts organizations in the community, both in publicizing what they do and in making a, bringing, bringing all the arts organizations together to discuss common issues. So, we're, we're a very busy and very lean organization, and your support is really crucial to us. We couldn't. We're, we're working very hard to expand our corporate sponsorships this year, and we are busy applying for grants wherever we can, can find them. We have a lot of support from individuals in the community, but the grants from the two cities are the bedrock of the support that we function with. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Yes, and we are receipt of your letter. Thank you so much. Questions, comments from the council? Yes, Councilor Chidham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Professor Perakilis, thank you for being here. Thank you for heading up L.A. Arts, which is a crucial organization to Lewiston and Auburn. It's very much appreciated. What you've presented to us is a, a letter of request, and the fiscal twenty-five budget. Have you prepared your fiscal twenty-six budget?
Yes, that, that should be on there. Is that not on there?
I see fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four actuals of fiscal twenty-five budget.
So, you see at the top, it says for fiscal twenty-twenty-six, and it looks as if the last two columns of the budget were, actually, the last three were cut off.
Okay.
I have them right here. I'd be happy to show them to you if you want.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I'm very much in favor of grant, continuing the grant that we gave you last year. As you know, this is a, a very tight budget year for us, and I was looking askance at the increased request of forty thousand dollars, but I think thirty-five is something that, in my opinion, is a worthwhile investment. However, in order to justify that, I would like to see the missing three columns.
I can forward you the budget.
Thank you.
Are you, not to put you on the spot, Director Roy, are, you know, since we have a truncated copy here, are you able to bring that up on your laptop for display?
I don't, he doesn't have my laptop attached. He has that attached to the screen.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Sorry.
Yes, Councilor Chidham?
Mr. Mayor, we're not voting on this tonight, and I don't know why we cannot delay this until we have the full information on, on the budgets. As I said, I've already indicated I'm willing and eager to vote in favor of the thirty-five-thousand-dollar request. However, I would like not to do that without full information.
Correct. Councilor Chidham, we are definitely in a workshop right now. I just thought if we could easily bring it up on the screen while we have Dr. Perakilis here, that would be great. Councilor Herman?
Thank you. I just wanted to also express my support for this expenditure. I know we're, we're in a tight budget, but I think that it, the thirty-five thousand dollars really, given the amount of activity that L.A. Arts draws to the downtown and to Lewiston in general, I think it's a really worthwhile investment in our downtown and our, and our arts and culture scene. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Councilor Glant?
Thank you much. Mine's not really a question about the thirty-five. The line item says fifty-five, so I'm trying to figure out where the twenties going. That's probably more for the director.
So, we put two donations, yeah, we put two donations into this line as a, as a budget proposal. And one was for the downtown Lewiston Association for twenty, and the second was for L.A. Arts for thirty-five. So, that's how you get to the fifty-five. That's an increase relative to last year. Twenty thousand for DLA is new. Out of fairness for the DLA, I wasn't aware that agencies requesting funds were allowed to participate at this point in the process. I would have invited them to attend to make their pitch tonight as well if I had known. I, I did invite them to the May sixth public hearing, so they plan to make a case at, at that time. But that's where the twenty, twenty thousand for DLA comes from.
Okay, that's good to know. The other question I have is, we have a lot of nonprofits that ask for money every year. Will any of those plug into this donation line? A lot of them appear to me would meet the requirements of the TIF that's been explained to me. Can that be looked at to see if we can switch a few of those over, such as the movies that we do every summer for our kids? That's for, that's a positive-type thing, so we could take some of that money at the same time? I'd like to know if that's possible. I'm sure you must have your donation list by now, but we cut a lot of people out last year because we didn't think we had any money. I didn't realize that there was a donation line here that maybe could be looked at for some of those positive things, just like his program, you know, L.A. Arts, that supports the, the community.
So, the statute provides for contributions made to nonprofit organizations that are primarily engaged in either economic development activities or marketing the city as a business or arts location. So, it's a definition we have to fit these contributions into with a straight.
Got him. I think there might be one or two that fits that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilor Saul?
I just had a question on where, so where would these funds come from for the donation, for the, for the request?
From the TIF account.
From the TIF?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that changes things, right? Because I wasn't in full support this year because of our budget. So, coming from the TIF, I know it's still, still taking from funds that we can put in other places. So, I don't know what I want to do with this yet. That does make a difference. I thought it came from the fund balance, so I do have a little more thinking to do, but I do love the programs. I love what you do for, for the city. I just wish that this budget wasn't so tight this year. But thank you for coming.
Councilor Nagin?
Thank you so much for coming in tonight. It's unfortunate that there's not a DLA member to, to speak as well, and I realize that you didn't, that you didn't know.
Well, to be clear, it's, I didn't know they were invited this evening. It's not for lack of interest. They would have been there.
Of course. Yeah, I agree. One thing that, that I'm very passionate about is, is activity along the Lisbon Street corridor, and I think it's, it's a huge win for the city that L.A. Arts has such a drawn pull in our community to bring people into spaces that, we're, we're creating third places in community spaces through the work that L.A. Arts does, and I think that's incredibly important. It's not just the art perspective, but it's also the piece of community that, that brings people into a space that, that, well, into an area that is underutilized, in my opinion. And so, ultimately, your programming is fantastic. Love the fact that it's expanding. Really, really enjoy the fact that, that you're located where you are, because I think it's, it's incredibly important for the city. And, yeah, I'm obviously in support, so.
Further comments, questions from the council? Yes, I want to echo all of that. Really appreciate L.A. Arts in our community and everything you do. Thank you. And understood, Director Libby, we will, we've made no final decisions yet, so you said May sixth?
That's your public hearing on the budget.
Yes, perfect. We will expect DLA then.
Next, we're going to go over economic development, which is on page seventy-two. These are projects that are funded through fund balance. We usually pull this out and fund them by fund balance. Seventy-five thousand for the steam plant every year is recommended for reserve to take care of the steam plants. Two-hundred-and-fifty was requested through fund balance to add to the economic development reserve for projects for development. To date, the economic development reserve has a fund balance of six-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, eight-twenty-six. There was a request of fifty-two thousand for public arts to be funded through the fund balance. The reserve account as of three-fourteen was twenty-eight thousand, seven-oh-one. There is a request for two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for Park and Canal Street Alley Stairs, eighty-five for Park Street Alley Rehabilitation, and two-hundred-and-three, two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, seven-fourteen for citywide Wayfair signs requested through fund balance. Other project balances in the reserve to date, the pilot business attraction for a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, sixty-four. The Mill Five environment is four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, thirty dollars for projects ongoing, and Museum L.A. Arts, a million-six, and the destination amenities of fifty thousand are currently in those accounts. If you remember, last year, I gave you a PDF of all the projects and what was spent. I can get that updated and sent off to you, so you would have that. But that is what is in this account. It's all those reserves for economic development to do projects in those items. Any questions on that?
Councilor Chidham?
Thank you. Yes, the Museum L.A. or Main Mill, that's the two-million dollars that was allocated by several councils ago that's been drawn down now to one-point-six.
Correct. And they, we should be receiving an invoice for the other portion.
Can you briefly explain the criteria for drawing that down? They simply send us a bill? There must be some justification for it.
Correct. So, they send a bill, but they have all the backup of all the invoices that they paid for their project. So, the last time they did a submission to the city, it was, it was quite thick. So, they give us all the backup that goes along with it.
And we pay a percentage of what they've spent on, on the redevelopment of this mill?
The full amount was authorized for, for them. We don't pay a percentage. It was that they have to submit their invoices in order for us to reimburse them. So, they were originally given two million back in twenty-twenty-two's fund balance, and we received an invoice of three-hundred-and-forty-five, two-seventy-one. In twenty-twenty-four, we have not received anything since twenty-twenty-four.
And that invoice for three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, was that money, was that three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars that they spent, or was it a million and a half dollars that they spent and they, they were requesting?
No, it was three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars that they spent.
So, we're the first out of the gate then to, to fund their rehabilitation of this mill?
I don't know if they're fully done, their project.
Oh, they're not? But they come to us first then, and we're going to?
I don't know, I don't know if we can say one way or the other.
I would say, Councilor Chidham, they are billing us and Auburn. The two-million dollars was set aside based upon them raising a certain amount. I don't recall off the top of my head, but they've reached that amount. And then, once they decide, construction, architects, and all that. So, I know that they've billed us and Auburn since their project's begun. So, now that they've raised that amount, they'll be able to draw down that remaining amount of money, and they won't draw it down till we get invoices. So, I know they're doing work over there, but I know they have been billing both, both us and Auburn.
Okay. Thank you. That's really my, the root of my question. Thank you.
Councilor Glant?
Quick follow-up. Is there a drawdown order? I mean, oftentimes when I see these things structured, you know, they have to use certain monies first, and then leftover monies get divided amongst whatever doesn't get done. Are they going to spend our two million and then go into their money they raised, or is there some kind of way to check on that so that it's going to be fairly and equitably done for the city?
I, I believe the agreement was, that was written up, that the previous councils approved was, they just had to raise a certain amount of X number of millions of dollars, and then they could start drawing it down.
Thank you.
You know, I don't want to speak for Museum L.A., but it's my understanding that they will be needing to spend every last single penny that they raised.
Any other questions? So, next?
Councilor Nagin, did you?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
So, next is CDVG.
So, for this portion, we're going to invite Catherine Ruth, who's our community development manager, up to review some of the work we've been up to on this side of the economic development department.
Councilor Glant, yes?
This is not part of the budget, correct? This portion? CBG?
No, it is not. I mean, it is going to be included in the budget later.
Right. But I, I have something I told you I have to take off, so I'm going to leave at this point. Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you so much.
All right, greetings. Catherine Ruth, the new community development manager. You have in front of you a packet of information. I'll be brief because the hour is running late, and you do have a meeting coming up. But I'll go through some high points of the memo on the CDGB budget, which is separate from the regular budget, but goes through your process too. So, basically?
I'm sorry, one second. What was that, Councilor Saul?
Do we have this information that she's?
Yes. It's in the?
Okay, I'll find it.
Okay.
It's in your agenda book.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Under A, all right.
All right, very good. Thank you. I'm just going to go through a few points. Basically, the city of Lewiston is very fortunate to receive funding each year on an annual basis, at least until this point, and that funding is to benefit low and moderate-income residents, and it definitely does that. We have to meet one of the three national objectives. We have to meet one of the three national objectives, which is to benefit low and moderate income, which all the projects do. We also sometimes have projects that prevent or eliminate slum or blight, in which you've taken down different buildings which needed to be demolished due to their condition. And it can meet an urgent need that is serious, threatening, and cannot be met with other sources of funds. And those are some of the emergency grants that you gave out after the tragic mass shooting and after COVID, helping some of the businesses. So the bulk of the funds that our CDGB funds are invested in are for the benefits of the residents in the target area, being census tracts 201 to 204. And you received a map in your package, which shows those downtown districts. Under Consolidated Plan, I'll mention that we do have a current consolidated plan, 2020 to 2024, approved in December of 2019. Because of all the staff transitions that have been taking place over the last few years and retirements, we sought and secured a one-year extension, so we're able to continue to use the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan. We are obligated to come up with a new consolidated plan for the next five-year period, beginning on July 1st, 2026, and that will be due in May of 2026. So the CAC Committee, which is your Citizens Advisory Committee, will not just be voting on the different projects that are approved in this budget. They'll also be called back to action after they recover from their quick process there, very intense, and after you all recover from the budget. So we'll be starting up this summer, perhaps with one meeting, or we may just start up in fall. So going on to page two, very briefly, under process. We were fortunate to have an extremely diverse group of people, which the mayor put together. We had one city councilor being Counselor Najin, one representative of homeless service providers, Lynda Scott, one immigrant community representative, Shu Kri Abdaman, two CDGB target area residents, Billy Jane Cook and Rosie Voice, two Lewiston residents, being our chair, Pauline Gudis, and Abby Najee. And I should note that Pauline was a wonderful committee chair and a great taskmaster. She kept us on time, on our timeline, and getting everything done. So we started meeting in February through March and put together recommendations, which are before you this evening. I will note that in the future, we plan to start in November, so that the committee can have a lot more time in order to go through their process and have less of a tense, stressed period of time. Having five meetings over a month on, with presentations and discussion is a lot for a committee. So we'll be starting earlier, I should say later this year. Under Funds Available, HUD has no idea what funding we will have. You've heard about the federal reviews and everything. We may have zero funding, or we may have the same amount, or probably less. So time will tell. So at this point, everything is an estimate, and it is likely that this may not even be resolved by the time your budget is done, and we'll be back to go over what the budget actually will be. So at this point, we were instructed to budget for the same amount we were awarded, which was seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-ninety-three dollars. Under Funding Caps, there are a whole variety of caps, but we were limited under Public Services for a cap of fifteen percent across the nation. Our cap is higher at eighteen percent, so we're grandfathered and we're able to use that eighteen percent. There are also administrative caps and administrative and planning caps. For the Public Service Agencies, I'll note this was an exciting year. Instead of having nine agencies, we actually had twelve agencies apply, as well as Social Services, so basically thirteen agencies. We had a fifty-one-point-three-percent increase in funding amount requested, so we understand how you all feel with budgets going up and lots of requests. We also, at the same time, had a twenty-three-point-four-percent decrease in the estimated funding, and that was the, because of the program income was a lot higher last year, so you could fund more items. It's going to be less for this period of time. So there are a lot of regulations, and for CDGB, although people might want to fund a lot more projects than we could, HUD was very clear. We would fund six projects, and that would be it, in order to be able to carry the high regulatory burden. And it's not six plus Social Services, it was six in total. So we had to subtract the amount of the partial funding for the caseworker for Social Services of forty-three-thousand-four-sixty-six out of the amount that we had, that's estimated, of a hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-three-seventy-five. So we ended up with a hundred-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars, again, as an estimate, for the Public Service Agencies, five. So after all of the scoring, which is very well detailed, and all of the applications and the process, we had various items that were brought forward for the way that we would score and decide at the end. And our director brought out his laptop and, in his techie mode, figured out a very weighted way, a proportionate way, that was very fair. So this ended up with Trinity Jubilee Day Shelter and Resource Center being recommended for an allocation of forty-one-nine-nine-seven. Trinity Jubilee Center Food Pantry and the Diaper Process, nineteen-thousand-two-eighty-four. Literacy Volunteers, seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-three. YWCA Kindergarten Readiness Initiative, fifteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy. And the LA Metro Chamber of Commerce Foundation, sixteen-thousand-five-eighty-five. The CAC, Citizens Advisory Committee, also recommended the cap for community development. This is all the staff that charges time to conduct the projects and keep everything in order. A hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-six-nineteen. One Lewiston Code Enforcement Officer for enhanced code enforcement in, in the areas of the census tracts that are covered. A hundred-and-three-thousand-five-ninety-five. Rehabilitation Program Administration, a hundred-and-twenty-thousand-seven-hundred. These are for our commercial and residential loan and grant programs, in which a lot of work needs to be done with intake, environmental reviews, one of which I'm doing now, so I can attest to the amount of time that's involved. Scopes of Services, inspections, and submitting payments. Twenty-eight-thousand-five-hundred for project delivery and loan capitalization. That's a small amount of funding for the delivery of services and to provide some capitalization for loans. They wanted to at least try to address that. And then the items that do not have caps on them, and probably the most interesting applications are those for public facilities and infrastructure. There were three applications. The committee chose two to fund, the first being Sunnyside Park Renovations, a hundred-thousand dollars. And this is a great little park that needs some updates. Currently, there's landscape, architecture, design work going on. We had a great session with neighbors and all interested parties on what they'd like to see in the scope of services and the different projects, which will be proposed to be phased out over time. A group of citizens is interested in addressing the field first, which is likely the item that would be done. And they're interested in doing donations, fundraises, acquiring donated services or contractors. And I've done all that before, because in my past communities, we didn't have any allocation. We had to find all volunteers in all donated match. So this should be a good program if it continues to be funded. And a hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-five dollars for important house street paving. The request was three-hundred-and-one-thousand-five-hundred, but basically, this is the amount of money that was available at the end, once we had gone through all the caps, Public Services, and the Sunnyside Park renovations. One item that Public Works indicated when they met with me and met with the committee later, is that they had estimated their paving bids, hoping to come in under them, so they could use some of the monies from the different bids if they came in as they thought they might. So that might be some help for that project. So that's all the information that I wanted to zip through for you, knowing your hour here, on the CDGB budget. We also have the home budget listed too.
We want to pause for a sec. If there are questions on-
Yes.
If there are questions on the CDVG portion of the memo, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Before we take questions, I want to recognize Committee Chair Gudis is in the audience. Thank you so much for joining this committee. We are honored by your service. Yes, questions? Counselor Najin.
Just a quick comment. First of all, I want to acknowledge that Manager Ruth was incredibly helpful during this process, and also showing up at the park session for Sunnyside Park. One of the things that I did not realize in the past, park improvements normally are done over a series of Community Development Block Grant funding initiatives. So there's multiple years of asks for the types of repairs that are looked for, and this has been the pattern for at least the past decade and a half. The group that, that came together, the Gore Palmer engineer had estimated that it would be about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, what they want to see. So I think over a period of time, we're going to have to figure out what we can raise as a community. But what was great was that the turnout was, was very positive. There was a large amount of people who showed up and said that they want to have ownership in that space. And so I think that could be a win. I'd also like to thank all of the committee members for their participation, and especially for Chair Gudis for being a taskmaster and keeping us on track in order to get this done in a timely manner. Those are the cons I just wanted to share on this whole process. I obviously voted to support all of these things, so if anybody wants to harass me in private or in public, feel free.
Perhaps I missed it. When would we have word on how much funding we're, we're getting, if any?
Yes, they told us to estimate using the current budget, which is seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-ninety-three dollars.
And they typically notify us between April 15th and, you know, the May 15th. That's typically when it comes in from-
Yeah, it may be totally different this year.
Understood. Thank you. Further questions, comments from the council?
So in the event we get a notification from HUD that the funding amount is drastically different, drastically more, drastically less, we articulate a pathway for direction to be given to the city administrator to make proportionate increases or decreases, unless the cut or the increase exceeds twenty-five percent. And then we would go back to the citizen committee, seek their input, and bring a recommendation back to you. You all have the final decision on how these funds are allocated. We strongly recommend you, you know, review the guidance given by your citizen committee that is HUD-designated to help you make decisions on these funds.
Counselor Najin.
And in case the funding is under the twenty-five percent cap in either direction, the Citizens Advisory Council, or committee, had worked with Director Libby, who had come up with a pretty ingenious scheme to, to split that, that payment process, so there wouldn't be a need to come back into this space unless that funding was substantially more or substantially less. And so that, that was voted on and approved by, by the committee. And again, thank you for, for your math.
Home budget then? Take it away, Catherine.
All right, very briefly, on the home action plan and budget. Home is another program that HUD has, and it can only be used to increase the supply of and access to safe, decent, and affordable housing. We've been in a consortium with the City of Auburn due to our size. Auburn is the main grantee, and we work with them. They've been extremely helpful. The consortium hasn't been informed of what the allocation would be, so again, we were directed by HUD to use their current FY25 allocation. The total allocation to the consortium for both towns, both cities, was four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. So Lewiston's share, along with previous year's funding that's rolling over, would give us an amount of one-million-one-hundred-sixty-one-thousand-five-hundred-six dollars and thirty-four cents. Sorry for the extra cents. It's just the way that Auburn puts it together. We would have funding for program administration, because this is a very complicated project. Fifteen thousand for security deposit grants, and that is for the homeless or near homeless, to provide them beyond what they get from GA or have to pay the rent. There's a security deposit that's required, and so this program will fund that if they're eligible. And we have one-point-one-two-nine million dollars for rental housing projects that will be determined. The city's provided home funds before, and from going through the choice, which would develop, you understand how complicated this is, so it takes a while to process these through. That one has been paid for from the home budget, as well as the current one that you're looking at, which is the DeWitt Project. Both of these will supply housing for people that normally would not be able to have that, so that's very important. So the recent projects that will be determined, the financial analysis that's conducted is totally amazing, so I'm learning a lot on that. So basically, that's the home budget. Any questions?
Counselor Najin.
Sorry to do this again, but one of the things I'd like to point out in the Community Development Block Grant piece is that we're funding partially an administration position for community development. We're funding partially a position at our GA office, and it pays for a code enforcement officer, and all of those pieces don't affect the budget. So I think that we've done a good job of allocating the Community Development Block Grant funds in a way that reduces the burden to the taxpayer as well.
Just to add to what Counselor Najin says, we have three and a half positions in my department that are funded by these federal grants, so they're not funded by the local taxpayer. One full-time, one FTE in code enforcement for building safety, and then, and then half of a portion of a general assistance caseworker.
So next steps are that we have a thirty-day public comment period. So if this budget is going to go forward, both of them, we'll post them before your next meeting, your draft budget public hearing on April 1st, and they'll be posted certainly thirty days before the May 6th final budget and public hearing. And time will tell as to what federal funding we receive.
Further comments or questions from the council? We're set.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, so we've now concluded our workshops. We were going to get things ready for our city council meeting, and we'll be underway here in hopefully just a few minutes. Hello, welcome to our Tuesday Evening Council Workshop. If I can get you all to take your seats or take the conversation outside, please. And we are kicking things off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by our very own Amy Smith.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberatory, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Amy. Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to begin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Council of Ward Six.
And I understand we have minutes?
Could you say six?
Yes, May, I'm sorry, March 4th minutes.
May have a motion to accept the minutes. Councilor Nagy, seconded by Counselor Chittam. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Six. Of you.
May I be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
I thought you were seconding. Counselor Chittam, please continue.
I'll say second. Madam Clerk, you did get the correction.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Yes.
Ward one?
Are we starting with Ward Six?
Yes, Ward Six, and I believe you said yes.
I said yes already.
Okay.
You said yes to the vote.
I said yes to the vote.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
I'll try and be more clear tonight.
Ward two, yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, everyone. We are now up to public comment. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record, and please indicate if you are Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the city council, all questions should be directed to the mayor, who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the city council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the city administration office.
Ronnie Parity, Ward Six. I'm here for two things. The question, one question is Martell on, I wanted to know if Martell is all set to start in April. Martell School, the home thing. If someone could get back to me about that, please. I want to talk about public health for my two minutes I have. Do you know what to do if we had a disaster like the southern states are having? Texas, Kansas? Do you know what to do for measles outbreak? What are our plans? What is the city going to do? How many have a to-go bag? Do you know what I mean by that? How many have a to-go bag? We need, we need, I'm asking, what I'm requesting is that Public Health Committee do some research on what our policies are in Lewiston and Auburn, because we should be working together on these where we're so close together. And what we do if we have a disaster? I don't want to go through COVID again, and I don't want to go through the ice storm again when we're not prepared. Okay? And some of you are too young to know what the ice storm brought and what happened during the ice storm. Do you know where to go for shelter? Do you know where to tell people to go for shelter? What are they going to do with their pets? All these questions I'm asking. I want to see something written up here for Lewiston anyway, and I think we should get together with Auburn. And I would like the public health to do something. I would advise you to have a to-go bag in your, if you don't have a to-go bag, and if you have pets, make sure that you worry about your pets. We had people during the ice storm that had to sleep in cars because they had pets and they didn't, couldn't go in the shelter. We had a shelter at the Lewiston Gym at that time. Where is the shelter now? So I'm asking for more public health. We need to do more public health. We do it with homeless. We do it with all kinds of, do you know what the definition of public health is? How many really know what the definition of public health is? I bet you don't know. I'm not going to say it tonight. But anyway, I really, and I had been a public health nurse for over 10 years, and I know what public health does. And the good thing is, we got Dr. Shaw back in Maine. He's going to be teaching as a professor at Kobe. So if we do have a disaster, an epidemic, we got Dr. Shaw to consult with. But anyway, I, please do that, public health. Susan, thank you.
Zachary Pratt from Luigi's. Everybody's asking, when's Luigi's opening? There's been some challenges for us.
Sorry, can you please identify your residence?
I'm an Auburn resident currently, but I'm also a business owner here in Lewiston, Maine. We've been having a huge challenge with our code department in the last several months from getting our plans approved to taking over old existing business since 1953. The building had to undergo a major overhaul from plumbing, heating, electrical, overall building structure. The reason why I'm here today is to address that all businesses, new, old, existing, should be brought, held to the same code from 1953 to 2025, whether you're renewing a license or maintaining an old ownership. We took it over from the Sandaliers in October of '24. We're now in August, March, almost April of '25. The reason why I'm here tonight, not because we had several challenges with the code department, the fact that we're here because we had challenges, because there's only been a few counselors that visit us at their location. Counselor Longchamp and Counselor Harmon. Counselor Harmon has visited us back in probably January. Longchamp's visited us recently. We've had a lot of challenges as far as fire. Fire is one of them. A lot of people are asking on Lewiston Rocks. Local businesses are reaching out to us, what's going on? This business has been.
I'm sorry, can you just lower your voice just a little bit, please? Thank you.
So we've been in business since 1971. I'm a new owner. I'm bringing new life into the building. Luigi's is a cornerstone of Lewiston. Between Simone's and Luigi's, there's 200 years of history just in these two businesses. We got no guidance from code department, how to get certain codes done, besides recently. We had to call a New Hampshire inspector from New Hampshire to do a third-party fire inspection for a fire-rated two-hour barrier paint. If we didn't know some, if we didn't know somebody that knew somebody that knew somebody, we would have never found that. You guys would never allow us to open. And to be honest, I was actually going to risk just opening, take your guys' fines, and that was that, because there was no such thing. No one does this in Maine. So if there's an expectation for you guys to do this for code and fire, they should be certified in this, in this type of application, because I know there's going to be other businesses in this area that are going to buy businesses. Businesses retiring every day. I know like four of them right now. I have, I know a couple of businesses that asked me to help them relaunch their business. And the reality of it is, without knowing new code today, there's no way they're going to be able to open without spending lots of money.
That's time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Further public comment? Sorry, before you go, I would also like to offer that you could also send public comment to the council at publiccomment@lewistonmain.gov.
You want to reset my time?
We will reset your time, good sir.
Matthew Agron, Ward Four. March is Women's History Month. Let's celebrate some women's contributions to our history, our culture, and society. Maine's own Margaret Chase Smith becomes the first woman to serve in both the U.S. House and the U.S. Senate. On June 1, 1950, she gave the famous Declaration of Conscience speech on the Senate floor. She called out national leadership and asked the country, the Senate, her own Republican Party, to look at the tactics being used by the House Un-American Activities Committee, and, without directly naming him, Senator McCarthy. She was the first to speak out about this. In it, she stated her basic principles of Americanism, the right to criticize, the right to hold unpopular beliefs, the right to protest, and the right to independent thought. Smith voiced concern that those exercising those beliefs at that time risked being unfairly labeled communist or fascist, something that's still continuing to this day. Now, we've had females serving in our U.S. military all the way back to the American Revolution. The story of Margaret Cochran Corbin, who, when her husband John died at a cannon, she took her husband's place and kept it firing. Wounded in service, in 1979, the state of Pennsylvania granted her $30 and referred her case to the Continental Board of War. Impressed with her service record, the board resolved that she had the fortitude and virtue enough to supply the place of her husband, and the execution of the task received dangerous wounds in which she now labors. The board considered her entitled the same grateful return that it would have made to a soldier in these circumstances, unfortunately. But, to be fair, they only gave her half what a man would have got. During World War II, we had the Code Girls, who worked at providing us with intelligence on enemy activity and covering up what we were doing to our enemies. And finally, we have Emma Teedsmann and Riley Pei, who are the voice of the Sea Dogs. On August 26, they became the first all-female broadcast team in Fenway Park and the second only in Major League Baseball. To all the women out there who have helped make this world what it is, I salute you.
Further public comment?
Matt Roy, Ward Three. At the last regular council meeting, there was a discussion about a strategy session. There is multiple issues with multiple counselors voicing certain aspects. One of it is that I'll bring up, here we are basically 15, 16 months into the current council term, and we're having a quote-unquote "strategy" session now in the middle of budget season, which arguably, a budget is the strategy. And we're basically seven months out when half of the 16 elected officials in this city are up for reelection. Now is not the time to have a strategy session. That should have been done a year ago, as we go into a new term. Not now, but in the past. Thank you.
Further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, item number one.
Item number one, public hearing and final passage for amendments to the solid waste ordinance regarding curbside collection for solid waste of condominiums along city rights-of-way. Requested action, let the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 62, Solid Waste, Article One in General, Section 62-11, definitions, received final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Nagy. Director Gonyea, Deputy Director Bates, please kick us off.
Good evening. We're here to answer any questions for the second and final reading.
Thank you for kicking us off. Sorry. Yes, questions or comments for our staff? Counselor Chittam?
Just for the public who is just tuning in, what this does is include condominiums in the curbside collection. They had previously been excluded, and now they will be included.
Counselor Nagy.
Well, I think this is completely appropriate. I think I've made my opinion known that ultimately, this is a patchwork based on a system of patchworks for our waste ordinances. And so, you know, I'm in support of this, but I'm also in support of review of all of our waste diversion and waste ordinance practices, so just wanted to make that clear.
Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Sort of similar to Counselor Nagy, I'm in support of this change. I'll have some more comments when we get to item number three about the fees going up, but I'm in support of adding condos to this.
Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number two.
Item number two, public hearing and final passage for amendments to the Streets and Sidewalks Ordinance regarding the prohibition of placing grass on streets and sidewalks. Requested action, let the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 66, Streets and Sidewalks, Article One in General, Section Streets and Sidewalks, Article One, in general, Section 66-1, definitions, and Section 66-4, placing substances on highway duty to remove, received final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Uh, Counselor Nagin, saying by Counselor Sol. Anything you'd like to say, Director?
Uh, this is both a safety concern that was raised by Counselor Roy, as well as clean water is our storm drains. So, we're talking about motorcycle, bicycle, pedestrian, as well as clean water.
Further comments or questions from the council? Counselor Chittum.
While I'm not opposed to this at all, I voted against it in the first reading. I'll vote against it tonight because I think it's entirely the wrong place in the code, and it needs more than simply a shoehorning of the grass into a, an ordinance that was originally intended to protect horses' hooves.
Uh, Counselor Nagin.
I will be voting to support this, only in spirit, basically. Ultimately, I think it's gonna be very difficult to enforce an ordinance for a code enforcement department that does not work on the weekends or in the middle, you know. I, I think about when I'm on my lawn, and it's never when code enforcement is, is, is here. So, good neighbor policy, people should not be putting leaves or grass cuttings in our roadways, but ultimately, I, you know, I am challenged as to how we enforce this ordinance.
Further comments or questions from the council? A public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
From Ward Six?
No.
Ward, uh, one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to one.
Item number three.
Item number three, amendment to the solid waste policy regarding fees for curbside collection for the multi-unit apartment buildings. Requested action, to approve the proposed amendments to the city's solid waste policy, policy manual number 52, as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Said amendment to be effective July 1st, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Uh, Counselor Nagin.
Second.
Second from Counselor Sol.
Good evening. This topic is really to adjust our current fee structure. It was last updated in 2010, fiscal year 2011. Many of our costs have gone up associated with the actual city contract, as well as private haulers have also higher rates. So, right now, we feel that the, the rest of the taxpayers are subsidizing this collection effort, so the recommendation was to, initial recommendation was to actually increase by $152 per unit per year. And that we've since discussed it, and per recommendation of the Administrator O'Malley's been to go with a 50%, so right now, the recommendation's to go, come in and look at $246 per unit, per year. Here to answer any questions, and...
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. So, as far as the fees, I, I understand that it hasn't been updated since 2011, I think it was 2010, 2011, and costs have gone up in that time. But, how much does it actually cost to pick up from a unit? And how does that compare between, say, a multi-unit and a single-family home? Per, you know, the cost per unit?
So, when we got the number of $322, we actually included all the operations, both collection and disposal, because once you collect it, you still have to manage the disposal of it. And we included all the units in the city to come up with that price, so not just multi-units, but all units, so residential duplexes as well.
So, so my question is, you know, where, where I live on Chamet Street, the block is less than 500 feet long, there's like forty households on that block. There are other households in the city who don't have any neighbors for, you know, thousands of feet. And, I can't imagine that it costs more for a multi-unit to be picked up than it does for a single-family home, you know, on a, on a rural road. And, those, those people, while they are paying property taxes, they're not paying any fee for trash disposal. The people in a multi-unit are paying property taxes as well, you know, through their rent to their landlord, and now they're going to be charged for this, this large amount for disposal while somebody else isn't paying anything extra. So, I'm just wondering about the fairness of that. There's another layer where I would say, on average, our homeowners have a higher income than our multifamily apartment renters, and I'm just concerned about the impact to people's rents for this, and, and just wondering about if there's a more fair way that we can distribute these costs.
To clarify, Deputy Director Bates, you're saying that, you know, the cost analysis that you've done includes also, like, the tipping fees, disposal?
Yes, we, we include...
It's not just picking it up?
That's correct.
Right. Uh, Counselor Nagin.
So, you know, I've been very vocal about the fact that, that I believe we have two trash systems in our city. Um, we have one that is provided by Casella, which has a standard of service that is applicable to any, it's not owner, it's single-family home or duplex, right? And then, we get into like the diciness of owner-occupied three units, and then four units that were built before 2003, which I believe is all of them. Maybe I'm wrong, but, but I, I don't know how many two, how many four units have gone up since 2003. I think what we want is an equitable trash system where all residents are getting the same services, that waste diversion is happening in the places where it should happen, since we, we have the ability to, to have recycling offered, and we are the service provider. The tipping fees are actually revenues for the city. And so, I think there's a place in which we balance all of these things, and also the expectations of outside trash handlers, to deliver the same services that we expect as single-family homeowners and single-family renters. And, and so, in, in that space, we know that one of the major increases for this budget, and for the next ten years, is that one, one million dollar increase per year for, for trash hauling. What I would really want to do is to not vote on this today, or devote it down today, and, and to ask the mayor to set up an ad hoc committee to review our waste diversion, our, our trash hauling ordinances in general, as well as possibly putting in some consideration for what we're going to do in thirty years when we have a full landfill. I, I think there's a lot of work that's been done in this over a period of time, and we just finally need to stop having a patchwork of systems where we have a squeaky wheel that, that gets a, a piece that, of the ordinance, when we drive around the city and we see how this inequitable trash system produces a, a standard that makes our city appear trashy in certain places, you know, to be honest.
Uh, I'm, since Counselor Nagin mentioned it, him and I have had a brief conversation or two about a, a proposed committee to look at ordinance, or, I mean, a, a brief conversation about an ad hoc committee to look at trash and waste diversion and ordinances and so forth, and we will continue those conversations and perhaps some more news a little later. Counselor Sol.
When was the last time this price was increased?
In calendar year 2010, fiscal year 2011.
So, it's fair to say if you were increasing along the way, we would still be at this number today? Instead of such the big jump today?
Right.
I, I think that's where the big issue is.
Yep.
The big jump. But, if we, you know, as everything increases in price, everything goes up, but this did not, if it had been, we would most likely be here at this number anyway?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Chittum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Counselor Nagin and Counselor Harriman for taking all my thunder. I too agree that we need to have a thorough review of our solid waste ordinances and policies. I'm not prepared tonight to endorse even a 46% increase in collection fees for non-single-family dwellings. You've done some great work here, and the numbers look as though, you know, we should be charging $321 per unit. However, there are other nuances that need to be brought into play, as Counselor Nagin pointed out, and I'm, I'm in favor of either tabling or voting this down tonight and taking a thorough, dedicated review, look at how we handle hollowed waste, solid hollow, how we, solid waste, and what we can do to increase the recycling. I know that Lewiston is in a bit of a unique situation because the revenues we generate, and we dispose of ash, so we don't have expenses, we don't have the incentives that other municipalities do. I, I've been an advocate of paper throw, which really is like sewer. You know, you only pay for what you need and what you use. That's not allowed in our ordinances, and I think if we have a committee that is dedicated to reviewing our policies and ordinances pertaining to solid waste, we will do far better than to take this very good effort, but admittedly, quick effort, which has been politically reduced from $320 down to, instead of 87%, 46%. So, let's get the politics out of it, let's get some science behind it, let's get some people to, to examine these ordinances with a thought to current, collecting current costs and for the future.
Uh, listening to council members, do we have a motion to table?
I, I'm thinking, it sometimes takes me a while. We have two options, it seems to me, Mr. Mayor, we can either table or defeat tonight and bring back. I'm inclined to vote this down.
Uh, I, I would prefer, appreciate your, your feedback, and I understand, I, I think tabling would, would be okay, and that would be my preference, but, yes, Counselor Nagin.
Um, I, I move to, 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 um, I moved to the agenda item, so I wouldn't be able to table anyways, I don't believe. And, and if we vote it down, it doesn't mean it can't come back, right? If we table it, we'd either be tabling to a date certain, and since there is no ad hoc committees established at this moment, I think, or we'd be tabling indefinitely. And so, I think it would be best to vote it down, in my opinion, and then establish the ad hoc committee, or if the ad hoc committee doesn't get established, then it's some, you know, maybe this does come back.
We're, uh, yes, if councillors are adamant that it be voted down, we can certainly accommodate your wishes. Since we're not tabling at this point, we will go to public comment for this agenda item.
Amy Smith, I live in Lewiston, and I agree that this should be voted down, due to it coming up so quickly and not having thorough review in advance. Thanks.
Further public comment? Uh, back to the council. Any further input from staff? Uh, yes, I, yes, Counselor Chittum.
I do want to appreciate the work that staff put into this. The, the, my no vote is not a reflection of your efforts, merely a desire to really get into the weeds on this thing, so thank you very much.
Counselor Nagin.
I would like to echo that. I, I know how much work Deputy Director Bates, in particular, has done around trash and recycling ordinances for a long time, and thank you.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo that, too. I know the work that you guys have put into this, and I just, I think we need more work.
I'm ready to vote.
All right. Uh, yes, I will be, it appears to be, I, it appears that I will be joining my fellow council members in voting this down, and, uh, yes, continuing conversations with our Ward One counselor about a trash committee. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Six?
No.
Ward one?
No.
Ward two?
No.
Ward three?
No.
Ward four?
No.
Ward five?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
Motion failed, received a vote of one to five.
We love you regardless.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number four.
Item number four, order authorizing the acting city administrator to execute agreements to provide home funding to the DeWitt Development. Requested action, to approve the order authorizing the acting city administrator to execute agreements to provide home funding to the DeWitt Development.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Who, was that? Counselor Harriman, followed by Counselor Nagin. Uh, if the two of you can please introduce yourselves and kick us off.
Sure. Nate Libby, Director of Economic and Community Development.
Can you just move the mic awfully close?
Penn, Penn Lindsay, Director of Development for Lewiston Housing.
Thank you both for being here.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. By way of background, the DeWitt Development is the second of two choice housing developments that are in different stages, stages of development. Wedgewood is near completion, families have begun to move in, it's a very exciting time for that neighborhood. The DeWitt Development is nearing its closing date for financing. Shortly after the closing date for financing occurs, construction will begin with demolition. The anticipated timeframe is to begin that work in April. As part of our support of this project, a short time ago, you approved a tax increment financing arrangement for DeWitt Development to help offset some extraordinary costs of construction. The second piece of funding that the city pledged back in April of 2024 and affirmed through the credit enhancement agreement that the city administrator has executed is providing $225,000 of the city's home funds to support this project. And so, tonight, we're asking for approval of the order. Penn is here to answer any questions you have on the development, I'm here to answer any questions you have on the funding.
Uh, is there anything you'd like to add, Penn?
Nope, thanks for having me, and happy to answer questions.
Questions, and yes, Counselor Chittum.
Uh, this is formulated, I believe, as a loan, but it's a forgivable loan, so that in, in essence, it's a grant. Is there a political or bureaucratic reason that we don't call it a grant?
It's bureaucratic.
Okay.
Um, this is structured as a deferred loan, so zero percent interest, zero payment for a twenty-year period. The reason it's structured as a loan is to be able to provide, require conditions that the development follows for affordability and how the, how the development is operated, those kinds of things. If we, if HUD said to the city of Lewiston, you can make a grant agreement with the developer, the teeth are probably not as strong as the teeth that exist in this arrangement, which is a deferred loan with a mortgage, a security agreement, conditions for remedying default. This kind of arrangement gives the city more teeth to enforce the conditions. Of course, we trust the developer's gonna follow all the conditions we've set out, but that's how HUD, HUD prefers these grants to be made.
Okay, thank you for that, Director Libby, and this, I understand, is going to be applied to one unit within the DeWitt, which will then float around as necessity may require, so that there will always be one unit that's subject to this loan of $225,000.
For the twenty-year period, yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Further comments, questions from the council? Public comment, or, yes, Counselor, after you, Counselor Nagin.
I, I was just gonna say, I'm looking forward to seeing this project break ground. It's, uh, been a while, we went through a pandemic and all kinds of other things, and thank you for being our partner in choice.
Uh, yes, and don't take this the wrong way, Penn, you know, I realize the delays have been, have been for multiple reasons, but I am so glad that we're gonna be breaking ground within my lifetime, so, thank you. A public comment for this agenda item?
Matthew Agron, Ward Four. I would ask that you guys hold off this money until Lewiston Housing breaks ground on the Martell School project, for seniors. This is a project that's been delayed multiple times. This is a project that's been delayed multiple times. We've been told now it's going to be delayed till at least the summertime. Does anyone truly believe that we've done this summer, that they'll start project? I doubt it. I'd ask you guys hold off giving them any money until they start projects they've already been funded for. Thank you very much.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Councilor Chittam.
Yes, I'd just like to express my appreciation to Director Libby and Chris Kilmurray for responding to the questions that I had put forward. There were a lot of them that I had, and you've addressed them all, so thank you. I'm sorry, there's one other item.
Please continue, councillor.
Near and dear to my heart are property descriptions. The Exhibit A, as I mentioned in my emails, was not included. I would like to review that before we execute those documents, is that possible, Mr. Administrator? Or Director Libby?
I think I'd prefer, if we can provide you that property description when it's available, to not hold up the closing of the nine other funders as part of this closing that's trying to get scheduled in the next couple of weeks.
I'm going to trust you that you will provide it to me, as I generally do, Director Libby. I'm not proposing to hold this vote up tonight, but I would like to see that property description. I've uncovered too many that have errors in them that propagate down the road, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Understood.
Councilor Nagy.
Well, it's not actually germane to this, to this motion, if we could just have, as a council, just a follow-up on the schedule for Martell, that would be helpful, because there are people in the community who are asking, so.
They consider to provide that.
Anything further from Director Libby, or you, Penn?
No, not for me, just wanted to thank you for having me, this is an exciting project, it's a complicated project. These home funds are one of our smaller sources in this $45 million deal, but every dollar is critically important, and so we really do appreciate the support, thank you.
Understood, thank you, we appreciate Lewiston Housing's tenacity in this project. Anything further, councillors? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Six.
Yes.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed, we vote a seven to zero.
Item number five.
Order authorizing the refinancing of the loan between the City of Lewiston and the Auburn-Lewiston Municipal Airport to extend the loan for 20 years and at zero percent interest. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the refinancing of the loan between the City of Lewiston and the Auburn-Lewiston Municipal Airport to extend the loan for 20 years and at zero percent interest.
Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Councilor Nagy.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Chittam. I see here we have the airport manager, the Honorable Jonathan Labonte, would you care to kick us off?
Yeah, I'll be brief, because I know your well and to your evening. The memo that I provided sort of summarized the situation, sort of historically how we got here, the reason for the request to restructure that capital allocation from the two cities' fund balances is because we did list the building for sale or lease, we did not get any bite for an aeronautical use, using that hangar to grow the number of based aircraft to generate revenue, as well as increase fuel sales, and be able to project to the FAA that we're growing our based aircraft numbers to sustain their capital funding in the airport. We're trying to tighten up the losses that we achieved from that building, it's a very expensive building to operate, so one pathway to do that is to ask the cities to restructure how we pay back those resources from the fund balance. As I shared with the Auburn council, who approved this a couple of weeks ago, you know, should the airport continue to see incremental success, and we find ourselves in a position financially well short of the 20 years to pay this off sooner, that will be our intent, carrying outstanding balances, something we don't want to sustain for a long period. But I'm happy to answer questions, and I appreciate you taking this up so quickly so we can finish our budget process at the airport.
Our pleasure. Questions or comments from the council? Councilor Chittam.
Yes, thank you. Manager Labonte, welcome. I do have some questions about this. There is language in here that simply says we want to restructure the loan. I have heard recently that this isn't actually a loan, but there was some other kind of financial mechanism. There's no payment, repayment terms in here, there's no schedule of amortization. I'm at a loss for the details on this, and I'm not sure how I can vote without knowing what exactly this restructuring means. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, it was not, and certainly Finance Director Roy can speak more, it was not, it was not structured like a loan you'd get from a bank. The cities offered to allocate capital from their fund balances at a set interest rate, that's why both cities' financial statements and audits don't show this as a loan to the airport, but rather an allocation of capital from the respective fund balances. There was a refinance at one point. At the time, Finance Director Heather Hunter had built back an amortization schedule that showed, and at that time, they were adding out years, extending the overall payment period, because the Luthanza project had ended, and there was an attempt to make sure that whatever the airport leased the building for, in that case to Elite, there would be a means to pay that, pay that back. So this restructure, the refinancing, is to essentially say, we've got $542,000, or whatever that final number is, an outstanding principle, if you will, that the airport's looking to spread that over 20 years, and will make that 542 divided by 20, make that annual payment every year to each city. But it was not structured like a loan, there was no loan closing, it was simply the two sponsors of the airport, the two cities own it, saying, we're going to put fund balance on the table, and at the time, if you go back to the earliest council documents for those first orders, interest rates were exceedingly low, in terms of what the cities were achieving for their fund balance, so they put an increased spread on the airport as part of returning that fund balance money, so it was more of an investment vehicle.
Thank you. The way the council order is worded, the airport could make a $542,032 payment 20 years hence, and meet the terms of the order, and I've just heard you say that it's anticipated that there would be equal payments over the next 20 years. It's also unclear to me as to whether the 20 years is an extension from today, or the initial capitalization date, or the, an extension of the original date at which this money would be paid back. There are too many questions here, Manager Labonte, for me to approve this order, I need to have some answers as to how this is going to be paid back. I have no problem with a zero percent loan, it may be possible, for example, for us to credit the amount of money that's committed to the airport from each city, or from Lewiston, I don't want to speak for Auburn, in lieu of receiving payments, there are a number of things that we could explore, and I'm eager to do that.
Director Roy, do you have comments on Councilor Chittam's comments and questions?
Correct, so it's 20 years from today, so the council order was redone and sent out, as I, I found I made a mistake, so the loan, it's not a loan, but the amount paid back to the city would be ending as of 2045, so it's 20 years from 2025. This year, the airport did pay the city their portion of the loan, so it would start with the fiscal year 26, would be reduced, and this is due to, as he mentioned, budget-wise, to get back in the black. We went two years without paying the cities their portion, and extended it on the backside of it when they did the refinancing, as he mentioned earlier, to allow the airport to receive more revenue, so that expenses that haven't been taken care of, capital that hasn't been taken care of, is starting to get taken care of, road runways and all of that. So this request is to extend that out 20 years, no interest, to allow the airport to do items in construction that needs to be done at that location.
Councilor Chittam, do you have anything further?
Yes, I appreciate that, and I'm more than happy to support the airport, the airport is an economic driver for the, for the area, and there's certainly not my intent to do that. I simply want to make certain that we have a clear understanding, if this order has been rewritten and redrafted, I guess the question for either Manager Labonte or Director Roy is, is there a time sensitivity to this, can this, is this something that can be tabled until our next council meeting, at which I hope we would have a corrected order and more detailed information on the repayment?
The budget for the airport, we would like to wrap up, I believe we are?
May 14th.
May 14th, having another meeting to finalize our budget.
I would, so Auburn's order said that there would, the payback would be, it'd be 20 years, so 2026, fiscal '26 to '45, split over 20 equal payments based on the outstanding principle. Very simple, straightforward. I will say personally, my preference would be not to come to another meeting for this, certainly missing bedtime with a four and six-year-old. If there were substantive concerns, my preference would be, if there's opposition to this, then we can dig into that, my preference would be to not bring it back to another meeting, but that's your purview.
Director Roy, are you, do you mean to say that what's in our packets is not correct?
So it was called a loan, what was in your packet, the date, are you referring to the extended date?
This, I'm referring to this page right here. There's been an updated, there's been, there's been an update to this page, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Could we have a copy of that, please?
The extended date was mailed out, the 2045 was emailed out to you on Friday?
Yes, so the second whereas clause, where it says fiscal year 2034, that's printed in your book, we emailed out on Thursday or Friday a corrected version, so again, the second whereas clause, instead of saying fiscal 2034, it says fiscal 2045. That was the only change in the order that we sent out Thursday or Friday of last week.
So, instead, it says FY 2034, and the corrected copy says?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, that was the only change?
Yes.
Okay, I've, I've made this correction on my copy, no need to print one. Councilor Nagy.
So, since this is actually just a refinancing piece, and the packet, the way that it went out, and was printed in the agenda, I would move that we just make a friendly amendment to what's in the, in the actual agenda, to move that to fiscal year 2045, and also, I would, I would want to vote to pass this tonight, based on the budget requirements, or the budget timelines for the Auburn-Lewiston Airport. Ultimately, it's an economic driver, as Chair Chittam had mentioned, and also, or Council President Chittam had mentioned, and also, it's a part of our logistics plan, and so ultimately, I like the fact that there's a plan to pay back the money that's being borrowed, ultimately, we would be splitting costs regardless, and so that's what I would move to, based on the fact that what went out in the packets to the public, and also what's in our books, is slightly different, I would just move to make the friendly amendment to, the loan would mature in fiscal year 2045.
Madam Clerk, who first and seconded this motion?
Excuse me, Councilor Nagy moved it, and Councilor Chittam seconded it.
Are you amenable to that, Councilor Chittam?
No, unfortunately, I'm not, there are another, there are a few other issues. In principle, I don't want Manager Labonte to have to come back here for another meeting, and I can almost assure everybody that once my concerns are addressed, and I think everyone's in agreement to those, it will, it will certainly receive my vote. But first of all, we refer to this as a loan, and we've been told twice tonight, this is not a loan, so that's an error in the order, and furthermore, there is no provision anywhere that will indicate that these are going to be 20 equal payments over 20 years. The way the order is written, as I stated, the airport could make a final payment of $542,032 in fiscal 2045 and comply with this order, and I don't think that's the intent of anyone. I would like to see a reschedule or a payment schedule included in the order, and I think we all agree to that, I have no problem with approving that order, but it seems to me, let's, let's make it straight, many of us are not going to be here in 15 years, so relying on verbal promises and commitments tonight doesn't cut it.
Yes, Councilor Sewell.
Can we just add that in there tonight, as an amendment to this order, that the payments will be made yearly?
You could, but Councilor Chittam said he's not open to a friendly amendment, so you can't.
Well, I have some questions.
Sorry, please continue, Councilor Sewell.
Well, he's kind of busy. Well, I guess my first question is, is there a current, the current, I don't know if it's a loan or a grant, is there an interest rate on the current setup of it? He says yes.
The current loan does have an interest component.
And so you're asking for the next 20 years that there not be any interest?
Correct.
Does, and I apologize if this sounds the way it's going to sound, does the airport generate revenue for the City of Lewiston?
It does not generate enough revenue to pay all of its bills, the two cities made a commitment, a legal commitment to the FAA, to the US federal government, that they would subsidize the airport's operations and its entire capital program for the life of the airport.
For the life of the airport?
That's correct, forever.
So we're still going to be connected to the airport in 20 years?
50 years, 100 years, unless Lewiston decided it did not want to be part of the airport.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Administrator O'Malley.
I believe if we just did an amendment to this?
Yes, I was going to.
As opposed to a friendly amendment?
Yes, I was going to offer the council that option, seeing as there's not agreement for a friendly amendment, councillor would be able to offer up an amendment, and should there be a second, we could vote on that amendment, and that would be added to the main motion. Councilor Nagy?
But we still have a motion on the table, right?
Right, but we could, we have a motion right now, but we could propose an amendment, and then that would be the motion on the table. Councilor Longchamp, did you have a question?
No, I just think we should do that.
Okay, do what?
Amend it.
Okay, we are, should someone wish to propose an amendment, I will recognize them.
I wish to.
Councilor Longchamp.
Yes, I want to.
Can you speak into your mic, please?
Yes, I wish to amend.
Amend the 2034 to 2045?
Correct.
Okay.
Include the 20 equal, the co-equal payments over 20 years.
Yes.
Oh, we're also adding in the 20 equal payments?
Yeah.
Okay, and then do you see any concerns with that, either Director Roy or Manager Labonte?
No.
Okay, all right, and then, do we have a second for this amendment?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Herman. Madam Clerk, did you get all that?
I did, yes, sir, so the first part of the amendment is in the second whereas clause to change fiscal year 2034 to fiscal year 2045, and then to also add in language that the repayment schedule will be 20 equal payments over a span of 20 years.
And that motion has been moved and then seconded, we're now talking about that specific motion at this time. Any further, I will go to public comment for this motion, but anything for, yes, Councilor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I really don't like to write orders on the fly. We've had an amendment that addresses one of my two concerns, one of which was that this is not a loan, and it's referred to as a loan, let's do it right. This has been my theme since sitting in this seat, let's do it right, let's do it right the first time. I don't see a problem, and I, and I will assure Manager Labonte that he need not come back for another meeting, but let's have the people who write these orders write it out so that we can all see it and study it, and include the removal of the word loan, because it's not, and the inclusion of a repayment schedule, and the correction of the date. Those are fairly simple things to do, but I would prefer very much not to do those on the fly.
Further comments from the council before we go to public comment? I am okay with this amendment, seeing as we, with Auburn. I am okay with this amendment, seeing as we, with Auburn, control the, control the entity in question. You know, should their concerns arise, we can certainly address them with the airport. This is not an outside entity. We, between both cities, we have control of the airport. Public comment for this agenda item?
Matthew Agren, Ward Four. Like Council President Chinam said, this is entirely an error in the packet that was submitted to the public. We have no idea that there was these massive changes being made, that it wasn't going to end in '34, not '45. There's no payment plan. The airport has admitted that they're having problems making their budget over, since they've built Hangar Five. There's nothing in this to stop them from coming before you in 15 years, 20 years, to say, hey, we can't make this payment. It needs to be formalized. There needs to be a system of payment plans. Just magically creating it tonight in front of, we don't know what the number is. There's no numbers. You, they even admitted tonight, they don't make revenue. Doesn't drive revenue to Lewiston. So it's become more of a private club, because they're no longer doing commercial air traffic. It's a private club for those who have private aircraft. That the taxpayers of both Lewiston and Auburn are subsidizing. Now they would like a zero-interest loan grant, whatever the word they want to use. They call it a loan in here. But there was an interest on the original money. Why not continue that interest rate going forward? Thank you very much.
Further public comment? Back to the council. I would like to push back on the notion that the airport is a private club. It's an economic driver for our city. It has made money in years past, and, and I appreciate Manager Labonte's good steward, I appreciate Manager Labonte's good stewardship of the airport, and look forward to its continued success. Counselor Sewell?
I just wanted to know, what is the option if we decided to vote this down? What, where, where does it go then? What happens?
We'd have to go back and, and look at our budget, and see where we could cut in the airport. That could also come to the fact that they'd have to request more from the cities for their subsidy.
More from Auburn?
And Lewiston.
And Lewiston.
For their subsidy. Currently, right now, we've kept it flat for many years, and have not requested anything more. So we'd, we'd look at that, and we'd have to look at all other options.
And would the cities be obligated to change that, that number, that yearly number? Is it like 200,000?
Two oh five.
Two oh five. So...
So no, you would not. As every other budget line, it is your decision. It's just, we would have to, to look at what we may have to cut from the airport. And as they mentioned, it is an economic driver, and there have been a lot of things that have not been addressed over the years, that need to be addressed out there.
I apologize for this question, but I keep hearing economic driver, and I just want to know how the airport is that.
Manager Labonte, could you address that, please?
Yeah, and there's, there's two ways to get it, that I, I think I'm here next week as well, on the budget. And the intent there was to provide a briefing memo, and then be able to kind of give an update. There's been significant changes at the airport over the last two to three years, as some of you are likely aware, and certainly, Council President Chinam is there, as is Director Roy. A number of Lewiston business owners have aircraft at the airport. Those aircraft are not just there for their leisure travels, to go get lunch or do sightseeing. Many of them, it's part of their business. Their ability to access clients throughout the state, throughout New England, throughout the East Coast, requires use of private air travel to do that. We have regular visits from corporate jets for businesses that invest in Lewiston, that have invested hundreds of millions of dollars in Lewiston. We regularly get Bates parents, or prospective Bates parents, flying in to tour the campus. We have alums of Bates that fly in for alumni weekends. Those alums are often contributors and investors in Bates College. We get a lot of folks who are looking at investing in the region. So the airport is based in Auburn, owned by the two cities, but serves really north of Portland. We get a lot of folks that are looking to come in from away to invest, sort of vacation here, or to visit. So there, there's a number of factors that, that go into that. Anyone who wants to order a package overnight delivery from UPS, that's made possible, because those aircraft land in Manchester, and we make sure that every morning, that aircraft can land by between 6:30 and 7:30 in the morning, to be met by a UPS truck. And if you're sending a package overnight, we make sure that by 6:30, that aircraft is out of the hangar and parked, ready to meet a UPS truck to head on its way. There's a, there's a number of different ways. The goal is to become self-sustaining. The FAA charges airports to do it. The only airport in Maine that is self-sustaining is Portland. So there's a dynamic there to keep in mind. I did hear comments about commercial service, and I think for folks to understand, the airport's not running headlong to try to get scheduled service, in part because the FAA has made it very clear, and in fact, had told previous managers, and perhaps it didn't get to the councils, that the FAA would not support the capital lift that it would take to build facilities out to do that. But we, we have commercial service. We have certificated operators that fly in with charter and other aircraft that are commercial activities. It's just, you can't go online and book a flight out of, out of Auburn-Louisville. Just want to highlight one point about what would, what would happen, and certainly, we would, we would have to wrestle with the budget. There's a number of things that we, we are adding to the budget to get at deferred maintenance, and some deferred management activities at the airport. Some of it's pavement, some of it relates to wildlife management, you know, maintenance of the fence, our drainage infrastructure at the airport. A lot of those areas have not seen the attention that they've needed, both from a preventative maintenance and an ongoing capital investment standpoint. We have an obligation, we, the cities, and through the cities, the airport, to meet certain standards of maintenance and aviation safety. Our inability to meet those would jeopardize funding for the airport. So our expenditures in certain areas have gone up. We've made a commitment, I made a commitment as airport director, the boards made a commitment, we're going to push to generate non-property tax revenue to do some of that lift, and part of that is this refinance, because the goal is to stay at 205, and then make a strategic decision of, do we stop asking for capital and just have the 205? So one less place, the airport's coming to the cities. The, the airport has bonding authority, so we could think of that 205 in the future as a stream of debt service, and then over time, try to shrink that by generating non-aeronautical revenues outside of the fence. We've got seven pre-permitted hangar sites that, that's, other than Sanford, it may be the, the most pre-permitted sites that now exist at a main airport, and we're about to aggressively market those. That means more revenue for ground leases for us, it means more fuel sales, that's more net revenue to the airport. So a lot of strategic decisions are being made. Again, I, I can highlight more of those next week. This is part of what we're seeing, is that we can, we can charge customers that we're bringing in, in the summer or winter, who have large jets, so we can pay when they touch down, we can sell them a lot of fuel. They want to be out of the elements. Hangar Five has become a part of that mix, but for us to pay $115,000 a year, pay $60,000 a year in utilities, pay for the, the kind of building maintenance that that building needs as it approaches 20 years, it's just a significant lift. Either we ask the property taxpayers to increase the levy to pay the fund balance back, or we look at adjusting how that fund balance money gets paid back, so we're not asking taxpayers for anything more to run the airport. And that, that's the priority right now, is grow the airport and not ask the taxpayers for another dime beyond what they're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Chinam?
Thank you, Manager Labonte. I, it goes without, well, no, it doesn't go without saying, I want to recognize the efforts that you have put forward into turning the financial operation of that airport around. It is certainly on the trajectory that we all want it to be. Full disclosure, I sit on the board of the airport. Director Roy is also the treasurer of the airport board. So there's a lot of institutional knowledge here in the room, and I wanted to recognize the efforts that you, Manager Labonte, have put into making that significant turnaround of the airport. As I said, it is on the correct trajectory. My objection to this particular order has nothing to do with the meat of the order. It has to do with the details. And, and I don't know why we cannot have staff craft a council order that reflects the things that we've talked about tonight, the fact that it's not a loan, that it's a, I'm not sure what you call it. We gave them money, and they're giving it back to us, to indicate that there is a specific repayment schedule, and to correct the date. Those are, those are relatively straightforward things. In, in essence, I am very much in favor of this, but I would like to have it done correctly before we vote on it. So I'm not sure where we stand right now. Are we still debating the main motion?
No, we're at the amendment right now, so...
And the amendment is to make certain corrections to the order as it's presented to us in the packet?
Madam Clerk, can you please read the amendment?
Sure, the amendment has two parts to it. One is to change the fiscal year reference in the second whereas clause from fiscal year 2034 to fiscal year 2045, and then to also add language into the order regarding the money will be paid back in 20 equal payments over 20 years.
Anything further, Counselor Chinam?
I would like to see it in writing.
See what in writing?
See that order in writing, with the, with the language referring to a loan removed. There's enough difference in here, as one of our members in the public pointed out. The public has really no concept of what's happening here. We're doing a lot of editing on the fly, and, and I would like to see a hard printed copy in front of us before we vote on it.
Before we, just to be clear, before we vote on the amendment?
I'm going to vote no on the amendment, because I don't have a hard copy in front of me. I'm happy to vote on the amendment. I would like to be able to vote yes, and I can't do that.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Longchamps?
Can we also amend the word loan?
Yes, that would be another amendment.
Yeah, could we add that to it? Is that possible?
I would recommend that you take care of the amendment that is pending right now, and then if somebody wants to make another amendment to address the word loan, that would be another action that you could take right after.
Yeah, I think that would be a substantive change, and I don't think we can add that as a friendly amendment at this time. Yes, Counselor Naejean?
So ultimately, this is the, the argument of spirit versus substance, and, and I appreciate the fact that this is a substantive change from what was in the packet. You know, loan could possibly be referred to as capital outlay. I think we all agree, or maybe we don't, but I think we all agree that the refinancing of the capital outlay makes sense, and we have to support it ultimately, considering the fact that Auburn has moved forward and done the same, right? And so, you know, and to Council President Chinam's point, it was not correct in the packet. There's a lot that's being changed, and ultimately, I could go either way, is basically what I'm saying. But for the transparency piece, I think it is important that this information is correct when it comes through in the packet.
Further comments from the council before we vote on the amendment? Yes, I will be voting yes on the amendment. I understand that the date was wrong, although it does say 20 years, so one could infer that that was a typo. And then we are adding the 20 equal payments. I, I don't think I'm in favor of changing the language from loan to capital outlay or something else. I think, I'm in favor of this amendment, and then I'm also in favor of the main motion. Seeing no further comments, Madam Clerk, please call the vote for the amendments.
Yes, thank you, sir. Counselor from Ward Six?
No.
Ward One?
No.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
No.
Ward Five?
I don't know.
She did.
Counselors, counselors, please, please allow the ward five counselor to vote. Thank you.
This is for the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The amendment, the motion passed by a vote of four to three. So now, pending before you is the main motion with that new language incorporated into it.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. As Manager Labonte was speaking, I was just thinking of some of the other, I don't know if you could call them commercial uses, but some of the other uses of the airport, in addition to the cargo flights that happen, Civil Air Patrol is, has a base or, you know, a presence there. Life Flight of Maine also has a presence there, and I believe there are people who do the angel flights, taking people to, you know, to hospital visits where they, where they need to get specialized care. So there are, you know, several other things that people might not be aware of that, that the airport does for the region.
We are now having public comment for the main motion?
Matthew Agren, Ward Four. Once more, you have no structure behind anything you're putting out here. There's no transparency in what this deal is. Can anyone tell me what the money is? Is this a loan? Is it not a loan? Those are important words. Nobody knows. Council President Chinam, who sits on the board of the airport, doesn't know if it was a loan or not. He has the institutional knowledge. He should know. If he doesn't know, who does? You guys are changing things on the fly, making, so the public has no clue what you're approving. There's no numbers given. I can make a guess at some of the numbers, but I'd like to see them in writing.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Counselor Naejean?
So again, I would like to echo what other members of the council have mentioned around Manager Labonte's actions at the airport. I think we went from a period of decline at the airport to something that is, that is vital in our community. Also, again, coming back to the logistical argument, you know, there, there's a, it's, we've positioned ourselves in such a way where the airport is actually like required in order to get goods and services to our community, and, and, and to get, and to reach the larger world ultimately. I think the issue here, again, is, is the transparency piece in which it was presented, and also the, the challenges within the order, the council order differing from what we're actually voting on. And so, I mean, I'm going to vote to pass this, but possibly not in this iteration.
Counselor Sewell?
The original, I just want to know why we can't call this a loan? When we gave money and they're paying it back, isn't that literally a loan?
Director Roy?
It was, excuse me, it was given to both cities approved fund balance for a capital project, with the thought that because the interest rate we were not receiving was very high from our bank, so instead of having us go out and bond it, we had fund balance, so we gave fund balance to that project, with the thought that they were paying it back. So technically, it was not an official loan. It was fund balance given, which normally, they don't pay back to us, but within that agreement that they stated they would then pay back the cities, because at the time, that hangar was supposed to bring in a lot of revenue. Unfortunately, it is not.
So if we remove the word, I'm not saying we're going to do that tonight, but what, then what, what do we call it? What, what would the word be? Like if you had, if we got rid of the word loan?
I mean, Counselor Naejean had requested calling it capital outlay, or...
So there's a, there's a term that we could use, like it's...
One moment, counselors. Counselor, I'm sorry, Director Libby, did you have comments?
So it sounds like the rub is there's maybe less than ideal legal instrument underpinning this loan. A promissory note is a simple way to memorialize a loan exists. You could amend the order at the end directing the city administrator to execute a promissory note consistent with the terms you've described. That might solve what you're struggling with here. It's a friendly suggestion.
I'm okay with the word loan being in there. I'm just curious as to why it's the whole, why it's being held up for that? Like, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be coming to you, Counselor Chittam. Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How long have we given this money out for, and have we ever received any payments towards this?
Yes, we have received payments. As I mentioned, back when we started and Jonathan was on the board and the airport manager left, Jonathan and I were looking at the expenditures, the revenues coming in. Expenditures were going out far much more than the revenues coming in. So we, he had discussions with both the city managers at the time and requested that they extend and not pay for two years. So those are the only two years that was not paid. Fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24, they were extended for the end. But up until then, they were paying the amount and just depleting their fund balance, and we were in the red quite a lot.
So I think there was an error in the cover sheet for the agenda, so I just want to be clear. So the hangar was built '07-'08 by a private developer, and the deal was that the airport would sign a long-term lease with that private developer and then in essence be a pass-through to Lufthansa Technic. So it was a privately developed hangar. They only built it because the airport agreed to sign a long-term lease, and then that was, at least was, it was a sublease to Lufthansa. The airport never made money on that because the airport's sublease was equivalent to the lease amount. After the developer had received their depreciation benefit, they turned back and said, "How about you buy this from me?" And then the cities stepped in and said, "Okay, the airport will buy it from the developer and we'll put forward the money." So, in 2012, when that happened, so but for fiscal year '23 and '24, '23, we ran a deficit, and that's a, that's a long story, probably for a reality show. But since 2012 through fiscal '25, only two years were the payments not made, and there was a request to the cities for those. Other than that, the full payment as required had been made.
Thank you.
Counselor Herman, did you have something?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm fine with the way that this is written. As the mayor pointed out, it's not like this is a loan to some outside entity that, you know, we have to make sure that every single I is dotted and T is crossed. I mean, we should be accurate, but this is a loan basically to something that we own. So, we're, you know, if they don't pay it, then we'll figure that out. It's essentially us not paying ourselves. So, you know, I'd be fine with this just going, passing as it's written.
Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask again, where's the fire? Why do we have to do this tonight? There is enough ambiguity in the rewriting of the order that was presented to us and given to the public. There are now new questions raised about there was interest being paid on this repayment schedule. There are questions about how much was initially loaned and how much has been repaid. This flies in the face of our promise to be a transparent council. For us to pass this tonight would be a travesty. Thank you.
So, in, you know, when we're talking about transparency, we have made a couple of, I mean, we've fixed a typo, and then we've added, you know, a monthly payment sentence to the, to the order. We did not start with an apple, and now it's an orange. It is now just an even little shinier apple. I think it is, and we've, you know, workshopped this, you know, on camera, in the public, in the public eyes, it's not done in some back room. I think we're, I think we're okay to pass this. We are beyond okay to pass this. And I would argue, and it's not necessarily a fire, I understand, but I see no reason to delay this, you know, just kind of, you know, add more, add more delay. Our future council meetings will also be very busy, and yeah, I see no reason why we can't pass this tonight. Counselor Najin.
So I think it will fly through next time, but ultimately, I'm gonna defer to the position of the council president and also a board member on the Auburn-Louisville Airport Committee. I think that we're all in agreement that in the spirit, we're going to pass this, but I think that the issues around how it's formed need to be corrected, as opposed to a bunch of modifications up here. And I agree with you completely, Mr. Mayor, that we just workshopped this entire thing and learned a whole bunch of other things that we didn't know before, and now the public knows if they're still watching, but they're probably asleep.
Counselor Sol, did you have something?
What motion are we on?
We are on the main motion. We have approved the amendment.
I would like to move the question.
Do we have a second to move the question?
I'll second.
The question's now been seconded, motions, to move the question has been, motions and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
All right, so for clarification...
To move the vote.
Right, you're voting to move the question, which would mean to stop debate, right?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward 6.
No.
Ward 1.
Yes.
Ward 2.
Yes.
Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4.
No.
Ward 5.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to two. So now, the motion before you is the main motion as amended, so it would be incorporating the amendment language in there. Are you ready for the vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we are.
Let's see, Counselor from Ward 6.
Gee, what's it gonna be? No.
Ward 1.
No.
Ward 2.
Yes.
Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4.
No.
Ward 5.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four to three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you for being here, Manager Labonte. Item number six.
Item number six, order authorizing the transfer of funds from the 2020 Bond 911 radio replacement mobile and portable radios and site connectivity projects to the Lewiston-Auburn 911 Communication Center. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the transfer of funds from the 2020 Bond 911 radio replacement mobile and portable radios and site connectivity projects to the Lewiston-Auburn 911 Communication Center.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Herman. I believe we have Director Hall here. Would you like to say anything if you so choose to?
Hi, Tim Hall, Director of Lewiston-Auburn 911. I'll keep it very brief. I suspect next week during our budget presentation, we'll discuss this in greater detail, but the 911 Committee approved a CIP request to both cities for a total of $2.5 million for the relocation of the 911 center. The current building that we are in is scheduled for demolition. I'm told that they're gonna let us leave it first, but that remains to be seen. Essentially, what this order does is reduce our FY '26 CIP request to the city of Lewiston by reallocating these funds now. It also allows us to move forward, assuming that we get some funding from the city of Auburn as well. It allows us to start the process now of doing the actual design work for the space so we can narrow down the budget, the final budget number for the renovations.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the council? Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question centers around the 2020 LCIP in which three items were approved and resulted in a bond being issued. What happened to the in excess of $2 million that was approved for radio replacement project, radio replacement project, mobile and portable radios, and, pardon me while I get my glasses, LA 911 Radio Systems Site Connectivity? Those were all approved projects. What happened to them?
And all spent, except for the $151,000 that were requesting that you reallocate for this project. So those funds have been spent to date for those three. What is remaining out of those three projects is the 151, 410, 15. So that's why we're requesting that you reallocate it to the LA 911 Community Center facility that they requested. That's in your LCIP book on page 26.
And those three projects have been fully funded and completed, and this is the remainder?
Correct.
All right, okay, thank you.
Further questions? Yes, Counselor Najin.
Hello, Director Hall. Quickly, Auburn has not approved their portion of the funding for the re-outfitting of 85 Park. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
And do you know when they're going to vote on it?
I do not.
Okay.
Got that question out, but I do not have any response yet.
One of the concerns I have from, which has nothing to do with you, but ultimately, the county is charging us now 14.5% more this year for a service that for, primarily, we have the jail that we depend on the county for, but they're running a service that we don't participate in, we provide our own services, and we're being charged more. 25% of the overall budget is, for the county, is being carried by Lewiston, and we don't use one of their major services. I have, and I voiced this before, I have concerns about 85 Park being, continuing to stay off the tax rolls. I understand that there's issues with finding another space for the 911 call center. It's unfortunate because in Auburn, it was actually in a non-taxable building to begin with, and this is a separate building that would just host the 911 center. Other than that, I believe we need the service. I believe the service that you provide, that the 911 center provides is essential for Lewiston-Auburn and for the one town outside of it that contracts. So, you know, since this is just a shifting of funds, I'm okay with it. I'm just not happy about non-taxable buildings downtown, and it seems like there's more and more of a proliferation of them, so that's all.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Full disclosure, I sit on the 911 Committee as well. I have concerns about taking what's always been a non-taxable building and keeping it off the tax rolls. I've expressed that to the 911 Committee. We're so far down the path of moving from central fire station to a new location that for us to be doing anything other than considering this 85 Park Street would defeat the purpose. We'd be in big trouble. I do have concerns also that we have separate dispatch areas for all the rest of the county and for Poland, Lewiston, and Auburn. I would love to see a consolidation there, and I think that moving Auburn-Louisville into 85 Park Street not necessarily puts a stake in the heart of a consolidation move, but it certainly makes it a little more difficult, because I'm told that there's not sufficient room at 85 Park Street to move the county operation from the county building over to Lewiston, so...
There is, there would be sufficient room for that. I don't know that there's a desire for that, but there's sufficient room for it.
Ah, then I misunderstood, Director Hall. Thank you for clarifying that. Well, okay, then I'm all excited about pushing, pushing the consolidation move and bringing the Sheriff's Department operation, the county operation, over here to 85 Park. In terms of this particular order or motion or item on the agenda, we've been running around the park a little bit here tonight, and I appreciate your forbearance, but I see no problem with transferring the unexpended money from these three bondage, or from one bond issue for three projects that have been completed, fully funded. We have a residual now of $151,410.15. So I'm happy to move that into the engineering and preliminary work for 85 Park Street.
We are now going to public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Yes, I too am in favor of a consolidated 911. I've heard in many reasons why we can't have that, and for me, none of them make any sense to continue having the separate 911 centers. And hopefully, given enough time and political will, we can make that happen. Further comments before we go to vote? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 6.
Yes.
Ward 1.
Yes.
Ward 2.
Yes.
Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4.
Yes.
Ward 5.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number seven.
Item number seven, order authorizing the transfer of funds from the 2025 redundant water transmission main installation account to the 2025 distribution water main replacement account in the amount of $1,175,000. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the transfer of funds from the 2025 redundant water transmission main installation account to the 2025 distribution water main replacement account in the amount of $1,175,000.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sol. Director Gagne.
Good evening. This project started with the distribution for the transmission main. We found that with bidding process, we're happy to report that we, we don't need as much money as we thought we did based on escalating bid prices. So, we're here tonight because there's a balance in that capital project. We're looking to utilize this for the distribution mains that are listed. So we're looking at Rosedale, Marston Street, Lincoln Street, Middle Street, Bates Street, Lowell Street, Granite Street, Bailey Street, and a short connection on Laura Street. Even after with, we're adding back a piece that in Phase 1, we had eliminated, narrowed it up for Phase 2, we're looking to add that back into Phase 2 on the redundant water line. Along with materials and everything, we still have 2.7 million available in this capital. So we're asking to transfer 1.175 million to utilize for the distribution mains that we've asked.
Thank you, Director Gagne. Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Director Gagne and possibly Director Roy, Finance Committee approved $1.75 million in change orders to the redundant water main project at its last meeting, and at that point, the account had 6.15 million available. Subtract 1.34 million from it, and we still end up with 400, or 4 million, which is quite a bit more than I think you quoted, Director Gagne. This, this transfer of 1.17 would deplete the original redundant water main project fund down to less than $100,000 or thereabouts, if my math is correct. Can you, can you comment on that?
I'll probably defer to Director Roy. My understanding is we had, based on the engineering analysis of this, that we had, we would have around 2.7 million after this transfer.
Okay, are you now deferring to Director Roy? Director Gagne?
Yes, please.
Okay. Director Roy, you're up.
So there are two projects. You might be referring to the ARPA funds. This is for the water lines, not the redundant main project that's going on with the ARPA. So I have confirmed that they have funds left, and due to the bid coming in under what they had estimated, they do have the funds to cover this.
The information we reviewed, and I think I agree with you, the information we reviewed at the Finance Committee when we approved a change order to the redundant water line to add more water main in, principally in Auburn.
Correct.
Was to increase the original contract by 1.75 million. We were told at the time that account number 6159669002, and I don't know what that means, but that had 6.15 million in it. We've taken away 1.34 million, so that leaves 4, 4.4 million, from which you... from which you are now asking for another one point one seven. So that that would leave about three million dollars. I'm sorry, my head wasn't working properly. It it am, am I in the ballpark there?
That sounds about right. The balance was over, I was told, over two point seven million remaining, so two point seven, three million, yes.
Okay.
And these aren't ARPA funds, these are city.
And I don't really know where ARPA comes into this. But let's let's leave that aside because I don't really want to get it any more complex than it. I have another question for you, though. Uh, Rosedale is in here, and I know that Rosedale was scheduled for uh, repaving in the capital improvements plan for last year, and it has been omitted from this year. When would this uh, three hundred and sixty three thousand dollars in water main replacement, which presumably means new pavement on at least half the road, uh, when would that be scheduled, Director Gagne?
So with this funding, we would get these projects out to bid. Depending on workload, we could start some of these this year.
Okay.
So we're still, we're still on the springs, depending on where the design phase is.
All right. My constituents on Rosedale who have submitted a mass petition will be happy to hear this. Thank you.
Counselor Nagin.
So to be clear, the the this is a shortfall in something we've already budgeted for the water main replacements, and we're using uh, excess in a in a bonded piece for the water uh, main redundancy. Am I correct on that? Do I? This is not new work. This is work that we've already budgeted for that's now seen cost overruns, but luckily we have some L C I P bonded funds available.
Correct. The L C I P funds were initially for the redundant transmission main. So we're here tonight to reallocate that to the distribution.
So this is not new work? This is planned work that was already in a budget?
This is planned work on a list, and we were seeing higher numbers in the distribution.
Okay.
Uh, public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word six?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed with vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Director Gagne. Uh, at this point, um, does the council wish to take a brief recess, or should we continue?
Go.
I I think we should mush on through.
Two more items.
Uh, yes, famous last words. Um, all right, uh, Madam Clerk, next agenda item.
Item number eight, resolve appointment of a proxy to vote the shares of the Lewiston directors of the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Company as a single block as determined by the majority of the Lewiston directors. Requested action to approve the resolve appointment of a proxy to vote the shares of the Lewiston directors of the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Company as a single block as determined by the majority of the Lewiston directors.
Madam Motion, please.
So moved.
Counselor Nagin.
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Counselor Soul. Uh, anything you'd like to add, Administrator O'Malley?
Um, Lincoln Jeffries has held that position for I don't know how long, but a very long time, so we're looking to have Nate Libby, his designee, um, serve as the proxy for the vote she has for the city of Lewiston.
It's nice work if you can get it. Uh, further comments from the council? Uh, yes, Counselor Chittam.
I serve on the railroad board, um, and I have no objection whatsoever to Director Libby, uh, taking the position that Lincoln Jeffries had held for low those many years. However, I am a little confused about the language of this. Um, the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Board is an arcane organization. Uh, it's got some pretty complex and convoluted bylaws. We're still not certain how members are directed to that, whether they're appointed by the administrator, uh, by the mayor, by the council. Um, there, in my mind, anyway, there's a lot of question about that. This suggests that the six directors of the railroad who represent the seventy-five percent shareholder, the city of Lewiston, will vote as a single vote so that four members will carry the will carry the day. Instead of having a six to four Lewiston vote, it would be a one Lewiston vote. Uh, this is news to me. I've been on the board for a year and a half, and we have been taking votes of the nine members, three from Auburn and six from Lewiston regularly and using majorities of those nine members. Um, this is a a bit of a change, and perhaps Director Libby can educate me.
Uh, Director Libby, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel Counselor Chittam, I was hoping you could educate me. I've I've printed out the bylaws today. I've read through them four times. Um, it seems to me the only role of a proxy is to um, carry the vote forward for appointment of directors. However, later in the bylaws, there's a different provision for appointing board of directors members. Later in the bylaws, it suggests the Lewiston City Council appoints the six members of the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors are charged with carrying out the business of the organization. They appear to have all the power. They direct the president to carry out the duties. The proxy, as near as I can tell, represents the shareholders, which is the city, the body politic and corporate, and that's basically it. What I understand this this uh, system to operate is, I'm an ex-officio member, I give comment, but I don't vote at any of your meetings, and then I serve as a proxy for this arcane obscure appointment process, which appears to be invalidated by other parts of the bylaws. So um, it, I'm gonna take a guess that the language of the order is carried forward year after year. So it's worked for a while.
Right, so the language in the resolve, as um, Director Libby said, it's the same language that we've used year after year, appointing the proxy. It's an annual item that the city council appoints a proxy. It is always has been the Director of Economic and Community Development. My understanding is after this motion that at the next meeting, we're going to bring forth the annual appointment for the directors because two or three of them have their terms that are up. Uh, the annual meeting for the railroad corporation is usually in April, and uh, they've asked that it be done prior to that. Um, that's probably the extent of my knowledge, but everything that Director Libby read um, regarding his understanding, sounds very familiar, what I've heard over the past many years.
So it'd be my pleasure to serve in whatever capacity this arcane document uh, requires of me.
All right.
Uh, yes, please continue, Counselor Chittam.
My understanding is that Director Libby would actually uh, vote on behalf of the stockholders of the city, the city, uh, for the appointment of the directors that have been selected through whatever process the Lewiston government decides to select them. He would carry that decision to the railroad board. Uh, it it does not require him then to interpret the vote of the majority of the directors taking particular action on an item within the business of the railroad, and I'm very comfortable with that.
Uh, did you have something, Counselor Nagin?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Just double checking with everybody this evening. Uh, public comment for this agenda item.
I heard that in from Administrator. Uh, Matt Roy, uh, word three. Well, since we're talking about arcaneness, you know, and I, as counselors, past and present will know, my fondness to bring up a charter review commission. I, sounds like Director Libby and Counselor Chittam are saying we need a bylaw review committee for the corporation in question here. And then by my math, we have seventy-five percent shareholder of this corporation, but we, only two-thirds of the seats. That math doesn't jive, and somebody might even say it's undemocratic. Thank you.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Uh, Counselor Chittam.
Um, I will add to Mr. Roy's uh, comments that not only does Lewiston have a proportionally larger representation on the board than its ownership interest, uh, Auburn have a proportionally larger representation than its ownership interest, no action can be taken without at least one Auburn director present. The same applies for Lewiston, but the the rules say you must have at least one member from each city present to have a quorum, and you can't have a quorum. A quorum is five members, so uh, well, you could have a quorum with just Lewiston people, Lewiston voters, uh, Lewiston directors there, but the bylaws say, no, you can't. You have to have both parties involved. So Lewiston has, Auburn, I'm sorry, has a lot more power than the seventy, the thirty, twenty-five percent ownership would indicate. And that's fine. We've been working, we've been playing together in the sandbox nicely so far.
Anything further, Director Libby? Counselors? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word six?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Passed with vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations, Director Libby. Item number nine.
Item number nine, informational update regarding the Safe Streets for All Study and Lewiston Safety Action Plan. Requested action, no action requested, informational update only.
Uh, please update us, Director Gagne. And uh, did you bring a friend?
I did. Good evening.
Please introduce yourself.
Kevin Gagne, Director of Lewiston Public Works, and with me I have?
My name's Jason Reddy.
Can you move the mic substantially closer to yourself? Thank you.
My name's Jason Reddy. I'm a traffic team lead with V H B, the consultant for the study.
So we're here tonight in in twenty twenty-three. Uh, my predecessor joined along with our city of Auburn and our Regional Transportation uh, Center. Uh, we also have uh, in the house tonight, uh, Larry Allen. He's the Director of Avogard A T R C. Um, we actually went through a process uh, with main D O T as part of the U S uh, D O T and federal highway uh, for uh, Safe Streets for All. Uh, we were granted the uh, the funds to be able to go through some planning, and we're here tonight to give you an update on that process. Uh, the process is near the end of um, a lot of effort over the last year with with Jason and other consultants, uh, as well as uh, engagement with the community at different, uh, as well as partners with Auburn. Uh, so it's it's been a a pretty dynamic discussion. Um, out of this, uh, one of the visions that you're gonna hear more tonight from Jason is uh, a vision zero. The idea is that our streets are for everyone, that safety is a priority, and uh, zero deaths uh, should be a goal for all of us. So uh, that's that's part of that discussion, how we get there and and what tools we use is is what we'll talk about. Uh, no action tonight, but uh, as through this process, there will be actions coming up uh, for you to weigh in on, uh, and hopefully approve a plan. So we do have a safety action plan as well.
Thank you.
Jason, get us off.
No, again, I just want to say um, to the council and Mr. Mayor, though, um, appreciate you having me here today to help discuss and talk about the uh, S S four, S S four A safety action plan. Um, I'll try to get through these slides as quickly as I can, but also to provide the information that you would be looking for. Um, so to go over this, what is S S four A? It is a Safe Streets and Roads for All, which is a federal grant program that was created um, through F H W A with a, you know, the goal to prevent roadway deaths and uh, serious injuries. Um, we noted who can apply, um, that this came through um, the M P O, A T R C, to the cities, both Lewiston and Auburn. Um, and again, like, why would we follow this process? Um, the interest is that um, by by following this data-driven and um, inclusive with uh, public public process, that the um, study recommendations would um, leverage the city to apply for um, specifically the S S four A grants, but also aligns you with other um, safety grant programs. Um, we mentioned that part of this is um, was using a disadvantaged census tract. Um, again, uh, uses a number of factors to um, based off from census information, to understand that uh, the di- different factors that would more heavily impact these particular um, census tracts. Um, again, like, the process was also in Auburn, but um, these were identified um, and carried through the process to identify that um, certain uh, impacts to the city uh, uh, related to the uh, the crash data. Um, I, as I mentioned, uh, a number of factors were put into a formula to identify which of the census tracts were um, disadvantaged. So what are the components of an action plan process, which is the ultimate deliverable that we were gonna be doing? Um, we can see that F H W A identifies these as the kind of the four main ways. Um, you know, there's a leadership commitment, a safety analysis, you know, and from which we use main D O T data to understand the different components um, of the crashes that we're here, but also that, you know, there's an engagement and collaboration. You know, it's not a cloistered committee, it's a very public process, and also using the um, city staff for support um, over this whole overall planning process. So I just identified here that, you know, here we are now with the leadership commitment. I mean, informational tonight, but uh, with the goal of um, action um, at a later later date. So what are the components of an action plan, the deliverable here? Um, we mentioned there's certain equity considerations, um, as we identified with the disadvantaged census uh, districts. Um, but the other portions of the action plan are strategy and process selections. Um, this could also include certain um, specific recommendations, um, as we'll get through um, late later in the presentation, but you know, certain countermeasures to enhance the safety uh, and of roadways in Lewiston. Um, also just, again, as I mentioned, there's just a transparency to this, uh, you know, uh, through a, through, through the public process and the ability for the public to provide input into it. Uh, another component of the action plan is not just the, you know, say, the the capital uh, proposals that we would have for it, but additionally, there's policy and process improvements um, that could be um, enacted in order to enhance the safety. Uh, I'm, I might not have it specifically here, but there's something called the safe system approach, um, which F H W A uses, endorses, um, with the intent being that um, you're not gonna be able to, you know, uh, help prevent all crashes through, you know, whatever it might be, whatever certain capital safety improvements, but there's other processes such as um, a policy, uh, policy changes, enforcement, um, you know, law enforcement, um, and other um, behavior-based mechanisms in order to enhance the safety of the roadways here. So just kind of an overview, um, you know, one of the first parts that we did was data collection. Um, this was using main D O T data, um, but other portions of it was the use of main D O T's Strategic Highway Safety Plan. We wanted to focus on certain uh, particular uh, aspects of 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 safety, and we can identify, you know, like motorcycle crashes in particular, or crashes that occurred in work zones. Um, one of the strategies, I guess we would say, is that we wanted to make sure that we aligned with main D O T's Strategic Highway Safety Plan so that we wouldn't uh, necessarily uh, narrow our ability to um, apply for uh, grants. Um, so we would say, yes, we also are falling under what uh, main D O T prioritizes. Um, you know, certain um, federal programs may be ending specifically to S S four A, depending on, you know, uh, there's a lot of upheaval, so we wanted to make sure that we were broad-based in how that would be approached. Uh, so more specifically to the data collection, um, in Lewiston, I'll just provide a brief overview, and it's obviously um, a lot of data here, but aligned under those um, focus areas that we looked at for the Strategic Highway Safety Plan. Um, so I guess in 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 broad overview, we used ten years' worth of data, so it's not just, you know, latest datas or a a small blip. We wanted to make sure that we um, took a long uh, approach to this. Uh, I mean, certainly, um, to the specific concerns, I know of the city of vulnerable users, of bicycles and pedestrians. Um, again, like, thankfully, those are rarer, but um, I I think as the data would show is that those are usually typically much more serious as a vulnerable user. You don't have the two tons of steel around you to protect you in the event of a crash, so we wanted to make sure that we captured as much um, data as we can, and ten years is generally what main D O T um, would would provide. Uh, on here, I just circled um, some of the no apparent injury, so I mean, you can see that that's approximately seventy-five percent of crashes, thankfully. Um, so what I wanted to just emphasize here is that um, our focus was, in a way, kind of excluding those types of crashes so that we wouldn't uh, dilute, I guess, in a way, the overall crash analysis to um, with our focus of preventing serious and fatal injury crashes. Um, the next part is just a discussion of the public survey. Um, as part of the process, we did provide a survey and circulated that and had um, pretty good participation. What's displaying on the map here is um, as part of the the survey, individuals could, you know, put pinpoint on a map and make um, you know, uh, I'm drawing a blank here, you know, particular recommendation. particular recommendations or just concerns, I guess, and that's how it's labeled up there. You can see on the left, it's locations of concern for drivers and on the right for pedestrians. The emphasis there is, you know, we differentiated them as well, just between different modes. I think there was also for bicycles, but just for summary of here, what I have circled on here now is just the emphasis that, you know, for differentiation, there's a lot more concern, as an example, with our main street in the downtown. There's a lot of pedestrian concerns, but maybe not as much for drivers, as we were able to kind of make those distinctions. In the same way, if you take a look at, I believe the examples are Pine and Ash Street and some of these other east-west streets, you don't see a lot of concerns that were driven by the survey, which in some ways could be resultant to a lot of the work that has been done to make those corridors more bicycle and pedestrian friendly with the work of the city. Again, this is just kind of a close-up of, as I should have been sliding, but now it's a bit more clear based off from the geo-located survey responses. Those particular avenues and on the left, you can see that there hasn't been noted survey responses for those areas.
Excuse me, if I could interrupt. While we're right here, can you explain what the numbers are of the 14, 15, 22, 25?
Oh, and right, that is a bit of a preview. That was part of our high injury network, and I believe that will be further on into the survey. But just in briefly, as part of our data-driven crash analysis, we were able to kind of rank each of, it was through a GIS-based process where we were able to take a look at each of the crashes. And to be clear, these notes here are survey responses and not the crashes. I think that comes up later, but we were able to use the data to rank each of these different corridors in order to capture a significant number of the fatal and serious injuries, and those numbers just represent the priority order that we found. All right, now I just kind of skipped ahead here, but this is also a summary of the survey responses and just is kind of going over the perceived safety. And I'll just summarize this here, just that you can see that there was a bit of a difference, both in the perceived safety between urban and rural. We allowed the survey respondents to kind of self-identify on where they perceive they are. And just to note that, you know, the rural, you know, survey respondents would see that they felt that motorcycle use was less safe than the people in the urban areas, and the same thing for the public transit, the urban users felt that was a safer option than in the rural. But as an overall, left to right here, you can see that people feel most safe driving, but feel less safe on some of the more vulnerable uses such as, you know, biking, walking. You can see down there at the bottom that the wheelchair felt the most unsafe under a zero to five scale. The last part of the presentation here is just the crash analysis, again, as we kind of had the preview before, but this is just showing that ranking of the crashes in corridors for each of the cities. And again, I mentioned that this process was also done for Auburn, but among the Lewiston crashes, you can see that we have a top 25 list and an inset upon the downtown core to try to give a better idea of where those locations are. But you can just see that like the number one location is that main street between the Auburn Town Line and Sabata Street, I believe is where it falls. And you can see that other low numbers, meaning higher priority, are in like, it looks like outer Sabata and Upper East Avenue and Lisbon Street, which, you know, you may think, just think to yourself, you know, is that surprising or not on where you believe that the crashes, or rather specifically to the fatal and serious injury crashes are. Right, and here's the actual listing of the top five that, what we found. You'll notice there in the severity of crashes, we have KAB representing fatal, very serious and moderately serious injury-producing crashes, and the length of the segment that was evaluated. The next, oh, please.
Yeah, Counselor, or Counselor Nejean.
Just quickly.
Can you use your mic?
Just quickly, there was a fiddle accident that occurred at the five corners on Sabata Street. I noticed that Sabata Street doesn't list a fatality up there. I'm wondering where the data came from.
No, that's a good question. What we would say is that a lot of these, and I think there has been a number of pedestrian-related crashes that might not show up here because our data was, I can't get it exactly, but it would be roughly 2012 to 2023. It's that 10-year period just before, I think there was a number of these fatal and serious crashes that occurred.
On the lower portion of Sabata as well as Maine. Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, no problem at all, of course. I'll just, this is also kind of another section of the safety action plan, and this is showing, you know, specific countermeasures. And both, you know, where it would be applying, you can see under there, there's also the four Es for, in this case, referring specifically to the engineering part of it, the timeframe, and the last one is the crash modification factor, where the FHWA provides, and under their statistical research, the estimated crash reduction that could occur if these were implemented. You can see that we have a number of examples, but the full safety action plan has many more pages. I guess this, I think it might be even more than what's here, but depending on how it's formatted.
I think the safety action plan is 252 pages of detailed documents, some very good graphics, some good narratives, so we will be posting that on the city webpage for the public and everybody to view and hopefully comment on.
Thank you. Yeah, of course, happy to answer those questions. So I mean, as another slide, here's another example countermeasure for Lewiston, corridor one, this was the highest priority. You can see that a lot of the recommendations have to do with the access management, which typically relates to the driveway density. With the more driveways, there's more conflict points, there's more places for cars to turn, and you know, a lot of the cases against, say, not just other vehicles, but where across sidewalks. So just in general, there's more conflict points, there would be more opportunities for a collision. There's other recommendations, just sidewalk accessibility, certain reconstruction, or it says ADA compliant sidewalks, that would generally fall under the detectable warning field at the, on the ramps down, just making sure that those are in there. Another one is the use of the exclusive pedestrian phase. That heading is there, but it's also just the lead pedestrian interval, and those are just ways to make sure that the, we'll just say that the pedestrian is prioritized a bit more or makes them more visible at a signalized intersection. The last one, again, is the bicycle safety improvements. In this case, it's bicycle lanes that has shown to provide additional safety benefits. Another one I wanted to highlight that we talked about was a component of the safety action plan is the policy recommendations. I can kind of go over these, but one of them is the Complete Streets Guide. This was an MPO document from a number of years ago. We made recommendations that to kind of revisit that and update that, I think, just based off from the speed and rather the advancements that haven't been made and updated recommendations. It would make sense to revisit that to make sure that we're providing the latest and best types of standards. Going on to the next one is just a consistency of the design and construction, holding to a standard. Another recommendation is through the CIP process to either incorporate in some way the use of safety to elevate projects that would enhance the safety. Aligning the policies and practices, I mentioned before, just research would say that when you have consistent signing and striping, in this case, like the example would be for like crosswalks, is it the, kind of like what they call a piano key or continental, which is just the straight lines? Whatever you do, just, you know, just be consistent throughout the city. And the last one is the development review process. One thing that we found through the study and through staff interviews is that sometimes there's ambiguity perceived or not understanding, like, the waivers that are given, and there should be a more deliberate process to that to make sure that safety isn't actually or apparently being deprioritized through the development review process. I believe this is one of my last slides here, just to finish this up, but what I wanted to kind of finish on was what Director Gagne mentioned, was that what we are hoping to finish up this process with is, is to give you this informational time. We will also have the safety action plan posted. I'll also mention that we have what is called a story map, which is almost like a presentation, but is much more interactive, and you can say, go to the actual crash data and like zoom in on the map and click on dots and try to get an understanding. So it's much more interactive process while still going through the entire safety action plan process in order to provide that understanding and, again, for public consumption so that they can provide comment and also for the councils themselves. And I guess the final part is just that closing summary of we are seeking the, not tonight, but at a future time, after deliberation and consideration, the endorsement of both the safety action plan, but additionally the vision zero process in general. As it was mentioned, you know, there's a video that was created a number of years ago and has been recreated many times, but you know, it's just a person on the street where they're asked, you know, you know, how many, you know, fatal crashes are acceptable to you, or how many should we accept? You know, you might compare it against a number, and you know, some people might say, well, oh yeah, we should try to drop that in half, you know, we want it to be several thousand less. But then the question is then reiterated, well, how many would be acceptable, say, in your family? Well, I mean, zero, right? I mean, so much like I would want, you know, zero for the people I know. I think we should endorse the vision zero approach and the actionable steps that we can take to eliminate serious and fatal injuries here and elsewhere. The last part, I just have this closing, but also the, through the survey process, we also asked, you know, for just direct comments. And we were able to pull out a lot of those comments from the survey and incorporate them into the safety action plan to, again, provide the personal context to what we're trying to accomplish with this.
Thank you very much. Yeah, anything we can do to make our city safer for pedestrians would be most welcome. This was, maybe Administrator O'Malley can confirm, or if he remembers, this is about a year or two ago, and we had within a roughly 24-hour period, three pedestrian accidents and I think one fatality, two fatalities. Okay. And so, yeah, and then we've had a number of other tragic pedestrian fatalities, including a student that was hit, a middle school student who was hit in a crosswalk. And yeah, no, I appreciate the effort here. One quick question I had, you know, you have tabulated the data for Lewiston. How does this compare to other cities in Maine? Are you, is that easily done, or are we aware, or have you done work for, I guess, how does it compare to other communities you've done work with?
I would say it's similar. We've also completed a safety action plan for Sanford, and we're currently underway in the Bangor area, which is actually 11 communities that will be completing safety action plans there for. I think you would, I, excuse me, I think we don't have the data in front of us right now, but I think there is a distinction that you may find with the local data of Lewiston, which is a bit more urbanized and I'll use not quotation marks there, that, you know, compared to, say, a more major urban metropolitan area like Boston or something like that. But compared to the overall ruralness of the crashes throughout Maine, I think, and I probably could go back into the presentation where I do have a summary of those crashes. I would say probably the distinction is there's going to be substantially more intersection crashes in Lewiston as opposed to overall Maine, where I would, again, I don't have the data in front of me, but I would say it's runoff road crashes or lane departure is the number one driver of fatal and serious injury crashes. And I would say, again, I didn't go over this as part of the presentation, but one of the number one survey responses and just the public feedback that we're getting and based off from, you know, the data and the research, is that speed is the, speed is the problem, and not just perceived, you know, I wish people would go faster, but you know, literally in a physics type of way, when vehicles are going faster, that's more energy and more susceptible to not just serious and fatal injury crashes through drivers, but other vulnerable users. And so that is one of the, I would say, one of the priorities is the speed control.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Shiloh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you give me your name again, please?
I'm sorry, my name's Jason Reddy.
Jason Redding?
R-E-A-D-Y, Reddy.
Reddy, Reddy, Jason Reddy. Thank you, Mr. Reddy. The third or fourth slide in there shows disadvantaged census tracts in Lewiston, and I didn't see how that correlated with any of the survey or study that you had done. Could you make that connection for me again?
The emphasis would be that per the, among other things, the city of Lewiston may choose to prioritize projects in that particular area, just as a comparison and understanding of the original equity considerations that were brought forward as part of the SS4A program.
Okay, thank you. That was twice tonight that we had heard on the CDBD presentation and on this, focus on the disadvantaged census tracts.
Counsel Nejean.
So just to comment on a few pieces. One, Director Gagne, it's excellent that your predecessor had the foresight to start this process, and I'm so glad it's in your hands at this moment, being somebody who is a huge advocate for multimodal transportation within our community. So that's fantastic. We live in a community that, and also thank the Safe Streets Committee and the consulting firm that came in to work through this. We live in a city that was built for industry, and ultimately, we've been cash-strapped for a very long time. It's difficult to change infrastructure when you don't have the funding for it. Also, we've been at the mercy of Maine DOT for a long time. I think working with Maine DOT is probably a better approach. You mentioned Sanford, you know, they managed to take a $28 million Main Street improvement under the RACE Act to basically rebuild the entire infrastructure of their downtown. And when you look at the slip lanes on Lincoln Canal and Sabata Street, I mean, these are all contact points that make this, the challenges of living in an infrastructure built for industry difficult to function as a pedestrian or on, you know, bicycle, any of those pieces. So I think this works excellent. I thank you all, everybody that was involved in this, including the folks from Auburn. The Complete Streets Committee is a joint committee, so, and I'm hoping that we can see in the future improvements that will, that will make our city safer and more inviting. And I would also just point out that I believe in some of the places where you did not see complaints about the ways in which the pedestrian infrastructure was structured, I think we're talking about areas where possibly folks have more access to vehicles and are also used to the way that that infrastructure functions. I'm thinking specifically around St. Mary's, the lower part of Sabata Street, the Charles Street neighborhood, the Farwall Street neighborhood, there's serious issues with being able to cross the road on Sabata Street on that lower section. You know, so all of those pieces, I think, like, there's a possibility that not all of the fact-finding that you got was reported back in a way that, you know, I can tell you that just from my experience in certain neighborhoods and certain places, that there's improvements that need to be, that need to happen. But again, thanks.
Further comments from the council? We're going to, even though we're not voting here, we'll go to public comment for this agenda item. agenda item.
I'll pull something out. Matt Roy, Ward Three. Ironically enough, I was perusing the city website. So our, both cities, their complete street ordinances were as current as of 2017, so that is eight years ago. The only reference on the city's website for the Complete Streets Committee, it meets quarterly and no evidence or, evidence or transparency of minutes, agendas, any supporting documentation, except for a link to both cities 20, as of 2017, complete street ordinances. So that raises the question, what has the committee been doing, Counselor Najin, all these years? Or the last year and a half, I guess, for Counselor Najin, Mayor. Another point that Counselor Najin brought up about intermodal, well, the problem is American transportation systems aren't intermodal. They're geared around the single-family car, just like our housing ordinances are basically guarantee, until recently, although there's a lot of work still to be done, a monopolization of the single-family home. There's no missing middle, as Counselor Najin and I both have had discussions about that topic since he's been counseling before on the planning board, which obviously has a key policymaking role in that regard, but compared to our, you know, overseas and, you know, as I was gonna say, I'm think, just thinking out loud here, if we had a public transportation system, let's say like Singapore, just for example, or anywhere in Europe, really, most of this data in the report, this report would not be there. Because it'd be far less vehicles on the road, less distracted driving, which is a major factor in accidents. I was gonna say, on my commute down I-95 yesterday, within two miles of getting on I-95 yesterday, southbound, there was two separate accidents. Granted, it was rainy, windy, very foggy, which also leads to the point that Counselor Najin mentioned about the middle school student back in 2017 by Fry and Main Street. That was early November, it was a very, well, it was right after the fallback of our clocks and the weather conditions were poor. It was dark, it was cloudy, foggy, and like I said, it was that Monday morning right after falling back of the daylight savings standard time transition.
Further public comment? There's a council. Counselor Chittam, yes.
I look forward to reading the 256-page report.
Director Gagne.
If I could.
I'm sorry, was that all Counselor Chittam?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes, please, Director Gagne.
Thank you for being up and paying attention this late, late at hour. We're doing a bunch of different safety initiatives. I want to just bring it up that while we're talking about it, the Main Street project is going on this summer, so we're dealing with ADA improvements as well as paving on Main Street. So while it may not be everything we would like, we're gonna try to maximize that with DOT. So we, we have acknowledged that DOT is definitely a partner and definitely at the table. We also have another study that's underway, which acronyms are great in engineering, but they change. So I think it's the Planning Partnership Initiative with DOT that ATRC is also involved in, and we're doing that in a community approach in different areas, strategic as it ties into our own downtown, our River Island Master Plan. This plan, the Safe Streets For All, it was citywide and it, with this plan, is specifically for Lewiston. At this point, we're gonna have some more public interaction input. And then we're actually, in receiving this, Public Works is gonna start putting things into play. So there's a lot of action in the engineering side, but we also want to acknowledge that there's other spokes to the safe systems approach, right? So education is a big component. So our young people, we tried to get a survey out to the high school prior to them getting out of school last year, and we want, you know, young drivers or, you know, early teens before they drive to understand what they're concerned with because they're not driving yet. And we'd like to incorporate all of that. So education outreach will continue, annual updates of the data to be able to bring this in and keep it current. So once this plan is finalized the next month or so, we're really not just gonna put it on a shelf and let it collect dust. We're gonna act on it, we're gonna keep it up to date, and we're gonna move some of these initiatives ahead with our partners. So thank you for your attention tonight. If there's any other questions, that's what I had to say.
Yes, Counselor Najin.
Sorry to prolong this. It's just a quick question about College Street. Is that a DOT-supported road? So College Street above Russell?
I would have to look, but we, at least as an MPO, we can, we can get shared on those type of roads, so.
There's been several complaints from the neighborhood about being able to cross College Street right there because of the speeds that people go, because it's a wide lane without, you know, so one of those things we can follow up on possibly out of this meeting, but it would be great to see some type of traffic calming through that area and also some protection for pedestrians to cross the road there.
You'll be seeing in our next CIP, a lot of different, a lot of different things, so.
Excellent. Further questions or comments from the council? Anything further from you, too?
Thank you very much for the time.
Director Gagne, Mr. Reddy, thank you so much for joining us. Have a wonderful evening. We are now up to the second public comment period. Should anyone wish to speak who did not already speak in the first public comment period? The second public comment period is now closed. We are now up to reports and updates from councilors and myself. Yes, Counselor Herman.
Thank you. Just very briefly, update for the school committee. I know we just had our workshop with the school committee last night and received our copies of the school budget. School committee is meeting again tomorrow evening and will continue with the budget talks. There are a few business items on the agenda as well. One of them is to receive and potentially approve the school calendar for next year. And one thing that people might be interested in is that Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Ahdha have now been proposed to be moved to a fixed date each year instead of, instead of waiting until, you know, a day or two before the holiday to decide the date. So that should help people plan a little bit better. That decision was made with input from the community and we will be discussing that tomorrow night. And that's pretty much all I've got for the school committee.
Seeing no other reports and updates from the council, we're now to new business. Should there be any, Counselor Sewell?
I would like to discuss the dirty syringe issue we have here in Lewiston. Now that the snow is, and is even before the snow, there is just so many, I'm seeing nonstop comments. I took a walk up and down a few of the streets, in the tree streets, and it was pretty disturbing what I saw. This should not be happening, for one. Our taxpayers should not have to deal with it. Public Works should not have to be responsible. The city of Lewiston should not be responsible for what's happening with this needle. I don't even call it an exchange program because I don't believe there's any exchange actually happening. I put, the blame falls on the users and the suppliers, and we have a supplier sitting right on Main Street. And when you have somebody supplying the tools you need, and it's not just syringes that they provide, they provide an entire drug kit. And drugs, guns, violence, they all hang out in the same circles. And so I just don't see how there's, how we're ever gonna fix any of it until we can get a handle on this dirty syringe situation. Hold on, I got some notes here. So two last thoughts. First, I think the program's an epic fail. It's not helping those who are using them and it's not helping the city at all. My suggestion is, I think a program like that should be required to obtain a license within the city that they are operating. I don't think that the state of Maine should be able to say, hey, you're gonna have this program in your city. It's not fair. It's destroying our city. It really is. Kids can't play on playgrounds, they can't go to parks, families can't go for walks down the streets. There's needles everywhere and I, it's time that we do something about it. And so, yeah, that's, and my other question is, do we have a disaster plan?
We have numerous plans, which I shared with Counselor Harriman and I think Counselor Roy a week or so ago, and I think there was about 15 different plans for different things that we have.
Okay. So I would just like to know what my fellow councilors, how they feel about the dirty needles in the city and requiring a license.
Yes, Counselor Longtrims.
I would definitely agree with Counselor Sewell on the needle exchange. I'm not sure how much exchanging is really happening, but I know a lot is being given and it is definitely a danger to our community, especially the downtown area where the most vulnerable people live. There are kids out there, I mean, I've known many people that have gotten stuck with the needles, from trash collectors to just people out there trying to pick up their yard. So it's definitely a huge issue that I think we should address and I think we need to do it sooner than later. I don't think they should be there on Main Street. It's a dump, the outside of it. So not only are they giving away needles, but it hauler, it just, it says so much about the organization as far as what it looks like. That's my opinion, but we definitely do need to do something about it.
At some point, it becomes enabling.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, it's a danger. I mean, that's, that's the truth. It's, you know, they're no longer just using drugs within their house and disposing of them properly. These things are just being thrown everywhere. And if we don't do something about it, no one's going to.
Anything else, Counselor Longtrims?
I think we should have a workshop or something about this. I think we should have, or something. It should be on the agenda, it should, I would like to get the folks here from COSI to discuss what their whole model is and figure out a way to tackle this because all we do is talk about it.
Counselor Herman?
Thank you. I think this is, this is a topic that is worthy of discussion. I would add that several councilors and city staff did meet with COSI, I think it would be a few months ago at this point. We learned that they do, they do take in just about as many syringes as they give out, and I would be worried about, about where all of those, if they weren't there, I'd be worried about where all those, those syringes would be disposed of. But I would, I would encourage, in addition to a workshop or agenda item, I'd encourage anyone, any other councilors who are interested to, to either message them, call them, or just stop in and set up a meeting to see more, to learn more about what they do. I do know that they, we also as a city could do a little bit better with, as far as providing collection points for syringes. You know, one of the things that came up at the, the meeting with COSI is there's a, there's a city box out front, but it had been broken for months and hadn't been able to be serviced. So I think that if we keep a closer eye on those things, you know, I see as I walk around, other needle boxes that are broken and they do, I, you know, I report them as soon as I can and they get, they get replaced or repaired quickly. But I think this is a topic that's worthy of discussion with the full council and, but I would also encourage people to reach out to COSI and learn, learn more about what they do.
Counselor Najin?
So just really quickly, you know, harm reduction programs are put in place in order to keep people alive that day, in the hopes that at some point in time they'll seek recovery. I can say that the changes in the state requirements during COVID changed the one-for-one needle exchange. That's what happened. So ultimately, an individual can stop into a needle exchange and pick up 100 needles a day. An organization can pick up to 1,000, and this is, this is in the state ordinance, right? And it's governed by the state. And so there are pieces where some of the, some of the allowances that we, that our delegation, or actually the entire state delegation allowed during COVID probably need to be walked back because we're seeing the effect of it in the community. I would also say that there are complimentary and accessory uses for all things, right? At the end of the day, it's difficult to envision or to picture, I don't know, a Gifford's Ice Cream next to COSI as it exists at the moment, right? Spurwink operates a needle exchange, it's in a clinical setting. We have the ability, regardless of the state laws, to control by ordinance and by zoning what we want to see in our community. And so, you know, at the end of the day, I think it's a conversation that both the provider, and most probably the CDC, as they are the licensing organization, and the city council need to have together in order to figure out what's the best course. I can guarantee you that the folks that, that are working at COSI, or at least the people who are supporting COSI are not, they're not looking to be a problem in our community, right? That does not mean that needles don't end up everywhere. And one of the things to think about as well is, as a service provider community, and it can be reflected in the arrest records for 149 College Street. Coming back to the needle boxes, they're convenient for me to put needles in to make sure that my neighborhood is safe, right? It's not necessarily something that is, that is always used by intravenous drug users. And when we see people coming into our community with drug-seeking behaviors and they use here, they also litter here. And so that's another component to this. It's not simply one demographic of people who are creating this problem for the city to deal with. Again, I think that like, the reasoned discussion would be with the licensing authority, the providers and ourselves to say, this is the constituent complaint, this is visible in ways that we can see, and how do we deal with it for the long term? And again, we do have the power through ordinance and through zoning to control what we want to see in our community.
Counselor Chittam?
Thank you. I'm glad that this topic has been brought up again. I am meeting with the director, the executive director of COSI, and Director Gagne, and some members of Public Works tomorrow, in fact, to discuss these very issues. We've had two aborted meetings for various reasons since our last meeting, which I believe was in November. I'm starting to grow frustrated with our inability to get together and address this problem one-on-one. I think having a workshop, I will ask Zoe Brokos, who is the executive director of COSI, and arrange for a workshop. I also want to play for her the section of the video of tonight's council meeting because it puts across very clearly, succinctly, and truly the concern that this council has for the effect that excess needles have on our community. So if I can get a techie to help me isolate this five-minute section of our meeting, I will have that on my phone and play that for her so that she can see that this is, this is a concern to all of us. I will report back to you on the outcomes of our meeting. One of the first is to have COSI assume some responsibilities that Public Works is undertaking right now, emptying boxes, picking up litter. There are several other initiatives that we're gonna be talking about. There are several other initiatives that we're going to be talking about to address this, as well as the reporting to, to the state. Sanford and Portland have both enacted local ordinances. They've taken different approaches. Sanford restricted needle exchanges back to the pre-COVID one-for-one. There were exceptions to that in the original state law and regulations, but it was not the one-for-100 that was signed by executive order by the governor and then promulgated into a rule that exists today. So Sanford elected to have local control. It said you cannot get any more than, and I think it was one-for-one, but they did have some exceptions. Portland has initiated a buyback exchange wherein people can pick needles up off the street and take them in and get a penny, a nickel, or whatever the, where the amount is. Interestingly, when I talked with that, about that with my counselor, she suggested that that could put people at risk if they don't know how to deal with needles, encouraging children, for example, to go out the way we used to collect bottles for the nickel. So there has been recently a article in the Portland Press Herald slash Sun Journal slash Waterville Sentinel slash Rangeli, whatever, that the needle buyback program has been a success. I have not read the article. The initial word that I had was that the buyback program resulted in destruction of boxes. People were breaking the boxes open. I spoke with the woman in charge of the health programs in Portland and found that to be an unfounded rumor, one of these many things that's flying around the internet that people believe in without doing any research. So that, that was not found to be true. I will read the article and report back to the council, and I encourage you to read it, too. So I will let you know the outcome of our meeting tomorrow, and rest assured, this segment of the council will be played at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chittam. Yes, Counselor Sewell.
I just wanted to let everyone, I do understand the concept of this program. I understand, and I, I think it's wonderful what they are trying to do. I just don't think that that's what's happening. You never convinced me that it has not created more users. And not that it was supposed to lessen the amount, but I think it's creating more users. It's creating more people to come to our city to do these drugs. And now, when you go outside any day, you're probably going to see folks running around the city like they don't even know what they're doing because they're on these drugs. One of the purposes for this program is safe injections, right? Everything needs to be sterile, so that you go in there and you get everything sterile to go outside around the corner to inject lethal drugs into your body. So I just don't see, I don't support the program. I would really love to just see it out of our city. I know that that puts people who are using that program at risk, but at this point, I mean, it's illegal drugs, and it just, I don't even know how to wrap my brain around that. So I would just, yeah, I'd like to see the program ended.
Yes, Counselor Longchamp.
I, too, do understand the program, but I feel as though there's, why am I losing train of thought? I'm exhausted. Yeah, come back to me in a second.
We will come back to you, not a problem. Counselor Najin.
So the article about the Portland exchange, the thing that they found was that mostly unhomed individuals were participating, and that it was funded by opioid funds. So one of the pieces that, just to bring up, is we do have a resource in a, in a fund that is at council discretion to deal with issues around the opioid crisis, and, you know, it's one of those pieces where I think maybe the public, the Public Health Committee could come back and give some feedback as well as far as like, the allocation of that funding portion, for maybe there's a way to set up an, a buyback program, right? You know, there's several, several different things that we can do in, in that, but ultimately, I think we're at, we're at the point in this community where, where we can't not do anything any longer. And so it's a, it's a continual issue for our image, and, and there are for sure concerns about, you know, sharps just laying around the city. So, you know, the, I think it's due time that we make some decisions around controlling how we want needles exchanged in our city. But I do not believe that we'll be able to revoke a state license in order to pull back the programming, unfortunately.
Counselor Longchamp, yes?
Yes, what I was going to say was that I believe the whole reason behind, you know, the needle exchange was to help prevent disease, right? But we are in fact causing a lot of spreading of disease when these needles are just left out on the street, right? Because people are reusing, or innocent people. If you want to use drugs, I mean, I wish drugs didn't even exist, but it's, I get it, it's your prerogative, but you are leaving needles out there for innocent people to potentially either die off the little bit of drugs that might be left in there if they get stuck, which has happened, or potentially get a disease that you may have. It's a public health issue. It's a very serious issue that we need to address sooner than later.
Thank you, everyone. I'll just weigh in really, or Counselor Roy, did you have something?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things I wanted to say is, I did read that article, and I think there was a 42 to 40%, 46% collection in those needles, right? So I think that is a positive trend. I'd be really interested to see how that would work around here. So, yeah, I agree, there is, there is a problem that we need to address at this point, so.
Thank you, counselors. Counselor Chittam, I appreciate you working to establish contacts and meetings with COSI and Public Works. Thank you for that. And, yeah, needles in our city is definitely a problem. You know, harm, we could be here all night discussing this, and I understand counselors' viewpoints. I mean, I would argue that harm reduction is not enabling. People were doing drugs long before COSI existed. We had needles in the city long before COSI was here. And, you know, I, yeah, I guess I want to make sure that we're not scapegoating, you know, a licensed entity. I think they can, you know, help us address the problem, and, you know, be interested to, to hear what, what comes of the meeting. Yes, counselors, Counselor Roy again.
Thank you very much. I've got to stop doing that. I just want to bring a couple of things. I just want to make everybody aware, there was an email that was sent to us on March 1st about food sovereignty ordinance. There's a proposal. I just want people, the council to weigh in, send me emails if you have any ideas around this and, and how to start some conversations around this, okay? So that we can bring it and make a proposal of that. The other thing is, is want to make aware of sex trafficking. There was, hold on, let me get this. There was a proclamation that was sent, I believe, to your, to the mayor about five or six weeks ago now, that you didn't respond to about this. So just kind of go back through your emails and kind of see where that lies, please. Okay?
Do you know who the email was from?
I can get to you and tell you that offline.
Yeah, we will dig back through the email archive. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Further, further new business from counselors? Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. I just want to remind the public that we will be having a Saturday workshop this coming Saturday in Callahan Hall from 10 to 2:00 or so. We'll be talking some 30,000-foot ideas. There were comments made earlier that this is awfully late in the game. Well, we did have a session a year and a half ago when we started, and actually before we were sworn in. So everything was copacetic and legal. We were not a sworn body at that point, but we did meet and decide on some general directions that we wanted to go. With the hiring of the new administrator, this year, the year's been thrown into flux. So we're doing it as early as we can, and the public is invited, although there will not be a public comment period. You're invited to submit your comments to the Lewiston website, to whatever that address is.
Publiccomment@lewistonmain.gov.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As always, my pleasure. Yes, Counselor Sewell.
I just wanted to remind Counselor Chittam that I think we've had two meetings, and Mr. Roy was at one of them, and the other, we were sworn in. And the first one was in that back room, and there was public there. So we have, we've had two.
Thank you. My old mind is failing me.
May, seeing no further. Counselor Najin, yes?
Just really quickly, just a reminder again, on the 31st of March, that'll be the end of the public comment period for the scoping of the FERC relicensing, which, if anybody really wants to understand what I'm talking about when I say that, because I have a feeling that like sometimes people are like, what? Talk to me so I can tell you why it's important, because we're not going to get an opportunity for the next 50 years to renegotiate with the license holder of this dam. And so it's important, this work right now is important that we advocate for our community for both safety and recreational access along the river.
Seeing no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I think it's high time.
I will take that as a motion, seconded by Counselor Longchamp. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. For those of us, for those of you who are still watching, we appreciate you sticking with us, and have a wonderful evening, Lewiston.